Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 22, 2024, and we are going to begin today with the flag salute by our county executive, Daniel Chatney.
Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to start with the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by the county executive department. All items will be approved by a single roll call vote. Anyone may ask to address consent items prior to the board taking action, and the item may be removed for discussion. Board members, would anybody like to remove?
Yes, please.
Okay, any?
Oh, yes. Two items. I'd like to pull item 18A and 21B.
Okay, 18A and 21B. And then shall we see if anyone out in the audience wants to pull anything from the Anyone online?
I see no one online, Chair.
Great, okay, let's...
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Holmes, second by Gore. Roll call. Gore?
Aye.
Landon?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Okay, and we're going to move on to item 18A.
And if you'd like, I can just jump in.
Sure, sure.
So it's our schedule for the 2025 meeting of the Board of Supervisors. So first of all, thanks to Megan and her team for putting this together. I wanted to point out something that I had asked her to do, which was to give not only the board but all of our staff a break during the summer months. Instead of... And sometimes we have three weeks between board meetings. Usually our board meetings are every other week. But our staff are the ones who are always having to make sure they are getting ready for agendas, and it's really nonstop, right? They finish a meeting and they're getting ready for the next meeting two weeks later. And so I would like us to consider, and it's in this agenda or this schedule for next year, but regularly consider a month break. And it doesn't mean we're stopping work, it just means allowing our staff to have a little bit of time off with their families in the summer. So they were to have a break between August and September. You'll notice there's a meeting on August 12th and then September 15th. So that's already on the calendar, and I wanted to point that out, one, because I wanted to let you all know that I had requested it, but two, if that's of interest for us to do in the future, I'd love to hear from you. And then, and that way, maybe we can build this in every year, and then we don't have to have the Chair just decide every year. The other item is that for the month of December, we have two board meetings, the 2nd and the 9th. Typically, we have the CSAC Annual Board Conference, the CSAC Conference, either in November or December, depending on the holidays. When I was speaking with the CSAC leadership team, they said, you know, nobody else from your Board of Supervisors ever attends. Your CEO is usually unable to attend. Our clerk is usually unable to attend, and same with county council. And they have educational tracks for all of those groups, but because we typically have a board meeting during that week, so I usually go the day after the board meeting, I would like to request that we move our board meetings in December, this in 2025, from December 2nd to be the 9th and the 16th, instead of the 2nd and the 9th, the 9th and the 16th, because the CSAC Annual Conference is December 1 through 5. So that's my one request of making the change on the December agenda for 2025, is those two dates, if that's agreeable to everyone else.
Comments?
I love the idea of giving staff a little breather, so I'm fully supportive of that, and then I'm fine with the December options, too.
Yeah, I'm fine with the December options. Good luck this year. You know, we've had many special board meetings. So kind of, you know, the best laid plans sometimes are spoiled, but I think it's a good idea, especially for staff. I wonder how they ever get any sleep working around the clock. Okay, so...
I have no problem with it. Go right ahead.
Well, Jim, we will be thinking about... We will be thinking about you next year, so that's, that's good. So do I hear a motion?
Do you want to...
Oh, I need to ask the public. Anyone else out there like to make a comment on this? Any, anyone from online?
No one online, Chair.
Okay, bring it back to the board.
And the motion should be as amended.
I'll move approval of the calendar as amended.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Gustafson, a second by Landon. Do we have to roll call this?
No.
No, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, hearing none, that motion passes. Wonderful. Okay, now we'll go on to the next one, which is 21B. 21B is commendation honoring Colleen Cuff.
Oh, did I pull the wrong one? I thought it was the one sop... Operation Greenlight.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, it's B. It's the proclamation, it's B, is proclamation supporting Operation Greenlight for veterans. Yes, I'm reading the wrong one, sorry.
That's, that's all right, and I see Dr. Oldham here, and I just pulled it because I thought it would be really important for us to be aware of it so that we can encourage our residents to participate, so go ahead.
Good morning. Good morning, Rob Oldham with Health and Human Services. Yes, thank you for helping us to draw awareness to... So as you know, in Placer County, we really have a long tradition of honoring our veterans. And so this year, in preparation for Veterans Day, wanted to put this on, on the agenda and appreciate the proclamation honoring our veterans with Project Greenlight, which is through, I believe, the National Association of County and the National Association of County Veteran Services Officers coming together to really raise awareness for our support and support really nationwide of veterans, but here locally. One of the efforts is to light up as many buildings as we can green from November the 1st through Veterans Day, November 11th. So really looking forward to showing our support here and for veterans all the time, but especially in these days prior to Veterans Day. Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you very much for that. Board members, comments?
No, I just want to encourage folks to do the same thing, right? We can put lights in front of our homes and just be aware of the Project Greenlight that honors our veterans. So I think it's an excellent idea, and I appreciate you bringing it to us.
Well, I'm all in favor. I'm the daughter of a veteran, I'm the wife of a veteran and daughter-in-law of a veteran, so they run, they run strong and heavy in my family. Anyone out there like to make a comment on this? Anyone online?
I see no one online, Chair.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
I'll move approval of the item.
I'll second. So motion by Gore, second by Jones. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, hearing none? Motion passes, and I'm wearing green, too, today, so how perfect. Okay, all right, thank you very much for that. Thanks, Bonnie, for pulling that. That was nice. Okay, now we're going to move on to public comment. Persons may address the board on items not on this agenda. Please limit comments to three minutes per person, because we have a time allocation of 15 minutes. If all comments cannot be heard in the 15-minute time limit, the public comment period would be taken up at the end of the regular session. The board is not permitted to take any action on items addressed under public comment. Anyone like to make a public comment? Come on down. You bet, come on forward. Good morning.
Good morning, Skip Myers, Placer County, longtime resident. And I wanted to advise you that I have hand-delivered hard copy of a cease and desist letter to county council, to each member of the board, and to the registrar of voters. That was on the 10th of October. Thus far, I have not received any response, but a favor of response is requested. County council, I'm sure that you are aware that our 2020 California election was not certified by the sitting Secretary of State, Alex Padilla. And why didn't he certify? We think that he knew it was a fraudulent election. Finally, in April of 2021, Shirley Weber did certify the election, and at that time, Alex Padilla was already Attorney General. And here's some suggested changes and improvements, and actually, we haven't seen changes and improvements, that's the issue. Since April 2021, nothing substantive has occurred to change or improve our election system. Although we, the people, had high hopes that our election system would be made more transparent to qualify for certification, I emphasize that nothing has really changed. Chain of custody is lost when mail-in ballots and ballot drop boxes are used. Also, remember that the Help America Vote Act, HAVA, of 2002 requires that our voter rolls be cleaned up yearly, actually would be very effective, or as needed. Unfortunately, we are now potentially left with inaccurate voter rolls. And in addition, do we have a backup process in the event of, say, a power outage or a cyber attack? So I suggest, and I actually, I submitted back in August, a document ensuring free and fair elections. I hope you guys have a chance to look at it. And it's an Amish backup plan that brings a remedy. One day, one vote, one person. Paper precinct ballots, hand-marked, hand-counted, and voter ID with signature verification, and no DMV voter registration. Paper voter rolls. And we should accommodate overseas military infirm, shut-ins, and special needs slash medical cases, and verify and reconcile votes at our precincts. And we need precincts, and they should be less, 2,000 or less population-wise in each precinct, so that you can manage the number of votes. And then, in closing, please consider these points and take appropriate action to improve our election process, and be aware of the seriousness and actually the urgency of the current situation, and as we approach the November 5th election day. And for we, the people, and our posterity, thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
And I'm under time.
Please come forward.
Madam Chair, before the next speaker, I just wanted to respond to this. Basically, Mr. Myers is claiming that AB 969, which was enacted into law in 2023, is unconstitutional. No court of law has found that. As a result, there is no obligation of the county to comply or in any way respond to his cease and desist letter.
Okay, thank you. Okay, please come forward. Good morning.
Good morning. Dr. Barbara E. Cahoon Young was a public health professional. She worked for Alameda County for several years...
Oh, I'm sorry, can I get your name for the record?
I will say my name for the record as I, as I go along.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm losing my time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. She was a public health professional, and she relocated here to Placer County. She retired as a Placer County Public Health Director on July 14, 2010. On April 14, 2022, Department of Health and Human Services Secretary Javier Becerra said this: "We know these vaccines are killing people of color, black, Latino, indigenous people, at about two times the rate of white Americans." I'll say that again. "We know these vaccines are killing people of color, black, Latino, indigenous people at about two times the rate of white Americans." Dr. Barbara E. Cahoon Young was a woman of color. She was my sister-in-law's mother. She took the vaccine in March of 2021. Her health quickly declined, and she died months later. My name is Ronald F. Owens, Jr. I was a public information officer at the California Department of Public Health for more than 14 years. Matter of fact, before I worked at CDPH, many years before, I got a degree at Sac State. Supervisor Landon, and I majored in government journalism, and I noted that you got a journalism degree. I praised my management of what Becerra said. I included information from the Vaccine Averes Event Reporting System. Some of the serious reactions indicated in theirs are allergic reactions, facial paralysis, miscarriages, heart attacks, heart inflammation, seizures, strokes, and sudden deaths. Unfortunately, the management made it about me and not about you, not about the people who are watching, not about the people who are behind me sitting, not about 40 million other Californians. I retired on December 31 last year. I merely incurred a 55% pay cut, because the information that was being withheld from you guys need not being withheld, it had to be, had to come out. On July 29, I sent this body and 57 other Boards of Supervisors in July, the information that I'm sharing with you. That information includes studies from Germany, Japan, and Italy, talks about the dangers of these COVID-19 vaccines, that they are killing people. I encouraged the public health officer to stop promoting, administering, and distributing COVID-19 vaccines, and I'll follow up my comments by forwarding you the July 29 information that I sent to this body. Thank you for your time, and I'm sorry I went over time.
Oh, that's fine. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate you coming today. Anyone else have a comment or question? Anyone online?
Yes, we have one person online, Chair. Caller, please unmute your mic and give your comments.
Greetings, Board of Supervisors. This is Diane Louise Alessi, Christian Valley Park Community Services Director, and almost 60 years in Placer County. I don't know, you wouldn't have a meeting without me.
Of course not.
I'm trying to just bring forth, actually, an acknowledgement to Shanti's letter in regards to doing audits on especially homeless shelter and medical respite NPO partners. However, my disappointment in it is that it won't manifest till after the 1st of the year, which then gives the NPOs plenty of notice to clean up their act, to their facilities, shred documents, and so on and so forth. So in that regard, I don't think it's wise to telegraph something without already putting forth some sort of subpoena for, for the items requested. I also believe that these, the whole border issue, everything is being run through NGO, NPOs, and religious charities. And we've missed the mark, especially with Citizens United letting everything, every company, whether nonprofit or not, act as a person and have a voice, and so on and so forth. But my son and I have a wheelhouse between trust and churches that we develop, so I have a very good visual representation in my mind at how many ways nonprofits play the scene between politicians, fundraisers, galas, sideways backdoors into giving you campaign money when they shouldn't, breaks the IRS rules. So when you're going to do, and Cindy, I heard you on Midler's last week saying that you would support Shanti's audit. I really, I realize this is an election year, but this isn't the kind of thing that you telegraph and then you execute later if you're elected. I think you just go forward with it, especially with the TGI issue and what Placer unified and City of Lincoln suing them for deceit and nontransparency. Now, I really, really want our county to actually hold a certain amount of title, too, because if they're going to get a grant for $6.5 million to buy a piece of property with state taxpayer funds, I think the state and/or county should have their name on the title, too. Anyways, with that, I will yield, and thank you for your time. Sorry, I went over...
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else online?
I see no one else, Chair.
Okay, anyone else out there have a public comment? We are about to end our public comment. Okay, we will close our public comment, move on to board member and county executive reports. Board members, Supervisor Holmes?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I had the opportunity to go to the local agency formation commission meeting in Yosemite last week. I was on the panel talking about annexations, and I gave a presentation about my history with Placer County annexations, and particularly in the fire districts. It was well-received. It was appreciated, the opportunity to be, be there and give my perspective on the annexations. Fire districts have been trying to annex for, well, I'd say 40 years, maybe longer. Anyhow, just wanted to give, give that report, that it was a good, good conference. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Gustafson?
Thank you. Last week, or last month, we had a TRPA governing board meeting, and in the afternoon, we had a committee meeting specifically focused on Homewood Ski Area and what public access is for their development project. It was quite a lengthy discussion. Several hundred people provided public comment, and the direction was given to better define what public access is. We have our staff working on that. What does it mean? What does it look like in terms of that? But unfortunately, after that meeting and based on a number of delays, the project has, the owners of the mountain have decided to close for the ski season. And I raised this this morning only in that I wanted to let, make sure the board's aware we're monitoring it and participating with our business community and other individuals who are working on how we support the West Shore businesses that depend on the ski areas, the service businesses, the ski rental businesses, the restaurants, and other opportunities. So a number of them have reached out to our office, and our partners at the North Tahoe Community Alliance and Chamber are working on some meetings to see how we can best support those businesses. It may be, one suggestion was additional shuttle buses to get people from the West Shore up to the other ski areas and things like that. So with the TOT funds we have, there may be some consideration coming forward outside of the regular schedule to augment and try to help serve those needs. So just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that.
Okay, anyone else? I would like to mention the Placer County Youth Commission. It's a group of high school students across the entire county that apply to be on this youth commission and are selected individually. They held a meet and greet at the HHS building last week, and a number of us attended, and I just want to tell you how amazing these young people are. They are the leaders of the future, and they've all developed subcommittees, and they're all, they're all wonderful. I know they've reached out to the supervisors to see if we would be interested in helping and supporting them, and of course, we always say yes, but I did want to let people know about this youth commission, and it's, it's truly amazing. They range from sophomores, juniors, and seniors, and so they'll come and give us a presentation later on in the year. I think it's around the ninth month or so, something like that, anyway, so... Okay, CEO, any report?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to mention, last Friday, I, and along with some of the board members, attended Placer Valley 2024, which is our region's largest economic summit. During that, during those presentations, we got to hear a little bit about AI and our Placer County and our regional economic influences, if you will. Some of those, we've received the slide deck from Dr. Christopher Thornburg, who presented, that we will include in some of our upcoming budget discussions. But I also wanted to, to give my appreciation and thanks to all the staff out there in Document Solutions, Facilities, PIO Economic Development that put that event together. Placer County is a presenting sponsor of that event each year, and a lot of work goes into that. So I just wanted to publicly thank the, the staff that put together our fantastic exhibit with BeBott, Ozzy, and the wine grape sorter. So, so a lot of appreciation to the staff for, for all the work that they did, so, thank you.
Yeah, it was a great event. The big, the big machine, the wine sorter, it's, it's a big, huge glass box, and there are little, little mechanical arms going through, picking out all the bad grapes. It's amazing. But I think the, the tractor, what'd you call that?
BeBott.
The BeBott, the BeBott's this little tractor that goes around the edge of Lake Tahoe and cleans up all the garbage. It's truly amazing. Anyway, thanks for that, Daniel. Okay, it is 9:26, so we're going to have to move to our first department item. Number eight, Community Development Resource Agency. And we're looking for... Hi, Alice. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Alice Atherton, Senior Civil Engineer in the Engineering and Surveying Division, excuse me, of the Community Development Resource Agency. And the next, this item before you is regarding project facilitation services at Bigford Ranch. And I'll go ahead and read the actions into the record. One, authorize the purchasing manager to execute a task order with Pinnacle Property Management under an existing master services agreement to perform project facilitation services for the construction of Bigford Ranch specific plan, Phase 1, Bigford Ranch Road Segment B, and Equestrian staging area in the amount of $171,000, and to execute change orders up to $17,100, subject to county council and risk management concurrence. Two, approve a fiscal year 2024/25 budget amendment, number AM-01064 for CC06001, Engineering and Surveying, to increase appropriations in the amount of $188,100 with offsetting revenue. And three, determine the proposed actions are consistent with the 2015 addendum with errata to the Bigford Ranch final environmental impact report adopted by the Board of Supervisors on December 8, 2015. So Bigford Ranch is an adopted specific plan project area that will create 1,890 residential lots in the general Penrin area. I want to mention that the post office has approved the name of Bigford Ranch, California, so the mail that comes into that development will be Bigford Ranch. The project is located south of Highway 193 and east of Sierra College Boulevard. Phase 1 of the project includes 1,049 residential lots, and with, it has been further subdivided into phases 1A, 1B, and 1C. And improvements for the public infrastructure underway, and portions have already been accepted by this board. I'll mention that 110 building permits have been issued to date. The Phase 1 Bigford Ranch Road Segment B improvement plans are approved, and this is part of the additional portion of the project infrastructure. The first portion of Bigford Ranch Road was approximately one and a half miles long, and the Segment B portion is just under a mile. It's being constructed at the intersection of Sierra College Boulevard and being constructed in an easterly direction. The Equestrian staging area, those plans are right now in the design review process. The project facilitator will help implement specific plan project, the specific plan project services, which include interfacing with the private design engineers, contractors, the developer, the project owners, Placer County staff, and regulatory agencies to help expedite a smooth and timely construction completion. So Pinnacle Project Management is on our procurement department's qualified list, that's a mouthful, and they've provided a quote, which is Attachment A in your package, and they were subsequently selected to be the best qualified firm to perform these services. The county and the developer also have a, it's a project facilitation services agreement, and this pays for the full cost of these services, so therefore, there is no impact to the general fund. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, board members, questions?
I have none.
Okay, we'll open it up to... Okay, we'll open it up to the public. Anyone out there have questions or comments about this?
We have a caller online. Caller, please unmute your mic to give your comments.
Hello?
Hello.
My name's Brian Myers. I'm representing Placer citizens for neighborhood rights. We've been told by planning over the last few years that Bigford Ranch doesn't have affordable housing at all, but that if there were any changes to the, anything that had to come before the Board of Supervisors...
We can hardly hear you. Can you speak a little louder?
All right, I will. Is that better?
Yes, better. Thank you.
Sorry. How much did you hear?
If you'd like to start all over, we'll let you.
All right, thank you. We've been told by the planning over several years that if Bigford Ranch were to come before the Board of Supervisors, the board would have the authority to discuss affordable housing with them, since there are 1,900 approved units there, but not one of affordable housing. It should be that Bigford Ranch carries some percentage of affordable housing. I know it's been around for a long, long time, long before affordable housing was an issue. But if it's true that because they're coming back for any kind of modifications, the board has the authority, then you should be pursuing some element of affordable housing to help meet your 1,219 housing units you need in the arena. So I would ask you to ask planning about that issue and see what their response is, and if it's possible to address affordable housing in Bigford Ranch, you certainly should do so to help the entire county out. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else online?
I see no one else, Chair.
Okay, anyone else in the audience? No one here to comment on that? Okay, then we're going to come back to the... Oh, actually, I'm sorry. You need to address those questions. Thank you.
Hi, Michelle Lewis, Deputy Director of Engineering and Surveying. And Bigford Ranch is paying into some affordable housing. They have an affordable housing requirement, and we are currently looking into reevaluating that, and that'll be brought before the board in the near future.
Okay, very good. Okay, I guess we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Move approval.
Okay, motion by Holmes, second by Gore. Roll call vote, I believe. Landon?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Gore?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to finish up this, these, this department items. Don't go away, ladies, or whoever it is. Okay, there we go. We're going to do 8B, Contract Amendment with ICF Jones &amp; Stokes, Inc. to amend Placer Legacy Open Space and Agricultural Conservation Program. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Callie Kedinger Cecil, Supervising Planner with the Planning Services Division. The item before you this morning is a relatively simple request to extend the contract with ICF for the Placer Legacy update for one year. We are working with the consultant to complete that work effort. However, due to existing work programs, we have not been able to allocate the time that we need, so we are requesting one additional year to complete the work program. The staff report contains some information about the background of this contract, as well as the importance of the Placer Legacy Open Space update as it relates to the general plan update in the Natural Resources Section. And with that, I conclude. Oh, the other thing I also wanted to note was that in addition to the request to extend the contract for one year, we are also requesting that the board find that this action is exempt and is not a project pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. With that, I conclude my request, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
I'm going to ask Callie to read the actual request into the record.
Yes, so the first request is to approve and authorize the Community Development Resource Agency Director or Designee to execute an amendment to an existing contract with ICF Jones &amp; Stokes Incorporated for the Placer Legacy Open Space and Agricultural Conservation Program Policy Document Update to extend the contract term for one additional one-year term from November 1, 2024, to November 1, 2025, and to authorize execution of a second amendment for up to an additional one-year term, if needed, subject to county council and risk management concurrence. And second, to request to determine the proposed actions are not a project pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, Section 15378B, and alternatively, are exempt from environmental review pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, Section 15061B3. Thank you.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for questions. Supervisor Gore.
Can I just clarify, Kelly, as I read the staff report, you're not asking for any increase in the funds. You're just doing an extension of the contract.
That's correct.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, and so, Kelly, I'm just wondering, can you tell us a little bit more about what this organization does?
Absolutely. So the Placer Legacy Open Space and Agricultural Conservation Program is a program that is, that does conservation and protection of resources in Placer County. So Placer Legacy has a number of easements throughout the county with the goal of conservation, and it is an implementation program of the general plan natural resources policies.
Okay, great, thank you. No other comments? Anyone in the public like to comment or have a question about this item? Anyone online?
I see no one online, Chair.
Okay, bring it back to the board for action.
I will move approval.
And I'll second.
Okay, motion by Landon, second by Gore. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, now we can move back to our 9:30 item, number one, County Executive Federal Legislative Update. Good morning, Joel.
Good morning, Chair, members of your board, Daniel, Karen. Joel Joyce here at the County Executive Office. I'll be joined here in a moment on Zoom with our federal advocates, Rich Gold and Michael Galano. Uh-oh, got the wrong time. Apologies, we're going to hopefully get them on here soon.
Joel, would it be okay if we took the next department item, just to give you a minute to get them online? Oh, I'm sorry. Good. One down, one to go.
All right. Sorry about the technical difficulties.
We have an echo.
Okay, so we'll, I'll repeat this here. Joel Joyce at the County Executive Office, here with our federal advocates, I'm Holland and Knight, Rich Gold and Michael Galano, to provide your board with an election, pre-election update here for the presidential election on November 5th, our legislative update, and then a Chevron decision briefing, which is handed down by the Supreme Court this past summer. With that, we'll get right into it with Mike and Rich. Take it away.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks so much for having us. Are you still getting an echo?
Yes, we are.
Okay. We're figuring that out on our end.
Can you speak a little louder, Mike?
Okay. Appreciate you all having us this morning. We are here to provide, as stated by Joel, an election update and a substantive update on the county's legislative agenda for 2024, as well as an update on the Loper Wright case, which the Supreme Court issued in June of this year. We're moving on to the first slide of the electoral map here. And as you can see, very evenly divided presidential electoral map right now, with 104 in the toss-up column in terms of electoral votes. Most importantly, in that category, the blue wall states, if you will, Pennsylvania, Michigan, and Wisconsin, as well as Nevada, Georgia, North Carolina, making up the principal states that will be competed for by both parties in two weeks from today. The presidential race is the closest presidential race in the last hundred years, going into the last couple of weeks here, closer than even 2000. And so the ability of anybody to be able to predict the outcome at this point is pretty tough. There aren't that many undecided voters left, and it's really about who's better able to turn out their vote on Election Day, and obviously with early voting prior to Election Day in the competitive states. Next slide, Mike. Okay. In terms of sort of how the two different candidates would govern, obviously, a second Trump term, the kind of principal areas of focus would be a return of opportunity zones, reauthorization of the Tax Cut and Jobs Act, which either president will have to deal with. And so we would see a reconfiguring of tax policy at the federal level. And then a significant focus on clawback of unspent grant funds. Thus, why we're all focusing on making sure we get a lot of the money from the last few years obligated that has flowed through the infrastructure law and the Inflation Reduction Act. And then finally, obviously, a big focus on the southern border quarter with changes to immigration policies and further enforcement, including potentially the military on the southern border, to really ramp up and clamp down on illegal immigration. Next slide, in a Harris administration, continuation of infrastructure and Inflation Reduction Act funding, a real focus on some of the things that were left out of. The Inflation Reduction Act, when Congress passed it, including funding for affordable housing, childcare, and then in terms of major issues, obviously reproductive issues with the Dobbs decision from the Supreme Court, continued funding of climate change prevention, and resiliency issues. In terms of the Congress and the election...
Next slide, please.
The Senate is currently split with 51 Democrats in the majority, 49 Republicans. Because Senator Joe Manchin of West Virginia is retiring, that seat is almost certain to move to the Republican category. We therefore start out kind of in the election mode as 50/50. The Democrats are defending several other seats, about five other seats that are top. Their top two to defend that will be most difficult will be Senator Tester from Montana and Senator Brown from Ohio. Republicans have a trio of seats where they're getting aggressively challenged, including Senator Cruz from Texas, Senator Fisher from Nebraska, and Senator Scott from Florida.
Next slide.
So there you can see kind of the breakdown of the map as we just talked about.
Next slide, please.
Okay, so, you know, the, I think the modal outcome on election night, if it's a very close election, and obviously, some of these Senate seats are in competitive states like Michigan, is about 51/49 Republican or 52/48 Republican. So most likely, a Republican majority in the Senate for the next Congress, starting in January of 2025. And then in the House, obviously, a four-seat majority for House Republicans right now. Some very difficult seats to defend in New York State, one seat in New Jersey, as well as a handful of seats in California. So really too close to call, given how small the majority is in the House. The conventional thinking is that the House will travel with whoever wins the presidency. So it is a good chance that if Trump is reelected, we will see a Republican House. If ARS pulls it out and wins, we would see a Democratic House.
Next slide. Yeah, and that's just a list of some of the competitive races, obviously, two weeks still to go, so it all remains fluid. As Rich noted, a lot of the toss-up seats in California and New York that the Republicans hold will likely break the direction of whoever wins the White House. So hopefully, we'll know more on November 6 in the morning, but all this, if the trending continues, may not get decided for a few days afterwards. Next slide. All right, so that obviously is the electoral environment we are operating within, and that will decide the policy environment that we will have to negotiate for the next two years and the next four years. The good news is that even though Leader Schumer in the Senate has a one-seat majority, and the Speaker in the House has a six-seat majority, which are razor-thin and very difficult to pass substantive legislation with those narrow margins, we were able this year to get a number of items completed, and we've got a few others teed up that we're hoping to get included during the lame duck session when Congress returns the week of November 12. A few we wanted to note for the board, first of all, the Lake Tahoe Restoration and Reauthorization Act was signed into law in September, and Congress passed that measure just before they departed for the elections. Very important piece of legislation for our region. Obviously, provides a lot of the matching funds to conduct forest thinning operations and stormwater improvements that protects both the public safety and the clarity of Lake Tahoe. So we were very glad that we got that done before the break, and we are very grateful for the leadership. for the leadership of Congressman Kylie and Senator Padilla and Senator Butler for taking a leadership role with that bill. Second item they got done earlier this year was a five-year reauthorization of the FAA enactment legislation. Counties have a role in about 34% of the airports nationwide, so it was very important from a policy and funding perspective to get that bill done this year, because those airports support about 12,000 jobs around the country, in addition to providing transportation to citizens and freight movement. So Congress cleared that in May. Third item was the Building Chips in America Act of 2023. That is going to be important down the road, because that will expedite the environmental review for any new chip manufacturing facilities that have a federal funding component. And as we know, more counties are increasingly diversifying their economies and getting into the chips business. So we were very glad to see that completed this year, and we think that's going to be an important tool in the toolbox for local governments over the next 10 to 20 years. And then the last item that was finished over the summer was the FY24 Omnibus Appropriations Act, and we wanted to note that one, because it contains significant funding increases for the Forest Service and wildfire-related activities, and it also fully funds the Payment in Lieu of Taxes program, the PIL program for local governments that have large presence of federal lands to help offset those tax losses. So that's all been finished this year. There's two other items we're hoping that Congress completes before the end of the calendar year. The first is the Fix Our Forest Act, which again is another item in the toolbox to address wildfire on federal lands. It would allow agencies to conduct forest management activities concurrently with providing an environmental analysis on federal lands. So we're very grateful that that cleared the House. We're hoping the Senate moves on that later this year, and grateful for Congressman Kylie's leadership and Congressman Lamatha, or our former congressman, who got his legislation included in that bill, which will allow grazing on federal lands for wildfire prevention activities. And then the last item we wanted to note that we're hopeful Congress completes this year is the Investing in Community Resilience Act, which will increase the federal cost share for the FEMA Public Assistance Program to help offset the costs related to natural Next slide. So again, looking forward to when Congress comes back, the week of November 12th. They've got, the election aside, they've got a very full plate. They've got to wrap up the FY25 appropriations process. They've got to complete the Annual National Defense Authorization Act. They are going to make an attempt to complete the reauthorization of the Farm Bill. Good chance they finish the Water Resources Development Act, which authorizes and funds the activities of the Army Corps of Engineers. The federal debt ceiling has been suspended. It goes back into place on January 2nd, so there's some hope that Congress can increase the debt ceiling before they leave at the end of the calendar year. There's also a treaty that the Senate will consider related to artificial intelligence. And then last, obviously, you've seen in the press, a lot of the national disasters here in the East Coast with the two hurricanes are going to require multi-billion dollars of relief. Additionally, reconstruction of the Key Bridge in Baltimore is going to be a multi-billion-dollar construction project, very important to the East Coast with freight movement and people movement. So we're hoping those items get addressed during the lame duck as well. Next slide. So earlier this year, the Supreme Court overruled the Chevron doctrine, and there's going to be implications across the board in the regulatory space, but I'll turn it over to Rich to talk a bit about where the case has been and where we're heading with the Loper decision.
Thanks, Mike. And just to give you all background, Chevron has been a doctrine in federal administrative law for the last 40 years. I feel most bad for administrative law professors at law schools this semester, because they've gone from having a very set script of what their weekly lectures were going to look like to definitely having to figure out what they're going to say now. In the history of administrative law, Chevron has laid the groundwork for how a federal court treats an agency decision on a federal rule, enforcement matter, permit, or any other final agency action. And what the doctrine states is that the federal judge overseeing the case will provide deference to an agency's interpretation of the meaning of a law, where there is a vagueness inherent in what Congress drafted, and the agency's interpretation of that vague section is reasonable. As we all know, you know, even though our federal statutes can be hundreds, if not thousands, of pages, they are often drafted at a high level, and it's left to agencies to devise, you know, how to bring those statutes down to a granular level, governing particular action by the private sector, states, and local governments. And what Chevron did was basically put the judge in the position of judging whether a federal agency's decision about the meaning of a law was inherently reasonable. And if he found or she found that the agency's interpretation was reasonable, and a reasonable one interpretation of several possible interpretations, he was to be, or she was to be deferential to that federal agency. The Chevron doctrine has been chipped away at over the last 12 to 15 years in a variety of cases, but until last June, it stood pretty firm when the Loper Bright case came before the Supreme Court. And it became pretty clear in oral arguments that a majority of the court felt Chevron was an anachronism and needed to be reversed, which is exactly what the court did in June. So the new standard remains to be fleshed out in detail, as we see cases come up through the circuit courts at the appellate level in different circuits, and certainly the Supreme Court will be speaking further on this. But the shortcut on this is basically, a court now reviewing an agency rule that finds a vagueness in a statute that an agency is interpreting, has to determine that in fact, the agency's interpretation of the statute in that rule is not only reasonable, but is likely what Congress intended. So what does that mean for us as Placer County and sort of where we go on things? It is no longer the case that an agency can rely on getting broad discretion from courts on issues ranging for us from the Clean Water Act and wetlands to wildfire, to all sorts of labor issues, et cetera. Rather, a court is going to look to legislative history, so committee reports and conference reports in Congress, and the details of the statute to determine whether in fact, Congress delegated specific authority to the agency and the agency's interpretation is consistent with that. And that's going to change not only how agencies draft their regulations, but also how Congress drafts laws. Congress is going to need to be more clear, more specific in its delegation of authority, so that when an agency is challenged on a rule, and a court looks at what Congress said in the underlying law, that the connection to the rule is clear, and that the agency can be upheld for being reasonable. So suffice to say, this is going to, I wouldn't say necessarily handcuff, but limit an agency's ability to come up with creative rationales for why it can do something under the Clean Water Act or under the Forest Service authorizing statutes, et cetera, et cetera. It is going to need clear delegation of authority from Congress to be able to undertake and be upheld on a rulemaking. And that is a much tighter leash, if you will, that the Supreme Court has put executive branch agencies on, and should limit the number of rulemakings that we see out of the executive branch going forward, although, you know, probably around the margins. Finally, I would just say that, you know, don't underestimate how important this is for Congress. You know, we are already hearing from staff on the Hill about the need for advice on how they draft language to make sure that it can survive analysis under Loper Bright, and that means we're going to see a lot more process and a lot more detail in statutes as Congress starts working on the tax bill we spoke about in the next Congress, as well as, for instance, the next transportation bill, which is coming up in 2026. So that's the short take on Loper Bright and what it means for us. But suffice to say, we are going to be looking much more closely at, do federal agencies have a very clear, underlying authorization to do what they are saying they need to do in a rule, in the statute that the rule is interpreting?
Yeah, just a quick, our last slide, NACO released a statement once the decision was released at the end of June, calling it a mixed impact on counties, really because it's going to lead to different results in different states. So you're going to see, you know, states like California and New York at state level being more activist with their state laws, and the red states are going to be a little more constricted without the federal overlay to provide some guardrails. So a few areas, we think you're going to be able to see some litigation going forward, obviously environmental. Those statutes have been fairly vague in recent years, so we would expect to see those federal statutes being challenged going forward. The HUD Fair Housing Act has also been targeted as being a vague statute, and we would anticipate some conservative challenges to some of the federal programs there. Similarly, with education and energy and transportation, which it's, you know, many of the laws written in the transportation space were based on maritime law, which are not all in federal statute, they're based on custom and case law. So there is some expectation that with aviation and maritime, there will be some challenges initially coming out of the gate, but in general, most local governments are still digesting the decision, and this is going to play out over the next 20, 20 and 30 years. So definitely wanted to get it on the county's radar as an emerging issue, and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Board members, questions? Supervisor Gusserson.
Thank you. Rich and Michael, I'm excited that there's some more funding in the Forest Service, but I'm concerned that I don't see elements that may have just been glossed over to really talk about increasing the pace and scale of treating our forests and potential innovations such as biomass and small diameter mills, that sort of thing. Is there any discussion about additional investments to help us with our vast number of forested acres surrounding our communities?
Yeah, for sure. On the funding side, in terms of treating federal lands, those dollars are going up. As the Board knows, we've been very active at the Forest Service on the policy side of the House. That's really where that debate is taking place in terms of biomass from federal lands as a potential energy source. This administration has been hesitant to go there, but as Rich discussed earlier, the next administration, whether it is Vice President Harris or former President Trump, offers a new opportunity to have that conversation. And based on what we saw in the Senate with then-Senator Harris and in the prior Trump administration, we think we may have a greater opportunity to move the ball on that issue.
Well, you know, that's our key interest in trying to increase that pace and scale so we can protect our communities and hopefully see some relief in insurance rates at some point. And then on the Investing in Community Resiliency Act, so as I understand it, if we adopt resiliency measures before a disaster and invest in them, we'll get 10% more if there is a disaster. Is that the reward?
That's right, and FEMA would potentially fund some of those resiliency activities.
Okay, so if they fund them, then that makes a difference. But if you're looking for us to fund them and then roll the dice, it's a challenge with taxpayer money. Thank you. I won't comment on the Chevron decision. I think there's a lot to weigh on all that, but thank you for your report today.
Supervisor Gore.
Thank you for your question, Cindy. And I just want to say thank you for the update on the Chevron decision, because I think it really is going to change the way Congress does their work. They're going to have to definitely be more specific on those bills that they're passing. And then, I mean, in a lot of ways, I like the idea of less agency, federal agency overreach and, you know, them interpreting what Congress says. So it'll be fascinating to watch how this plays out, lawsuits, but then specific and maybe better legislation written in a way that might have a little bit more common sense than just leaving it to the agencies to interpret. So I guess y'all will keep us posted, but it'll be very interesting to watch. So I appreciate the update. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Holmes.
Thank you, Chair. Rich and Michael, I just want to thank you for 20 years we've been together. You've set up important meetings for us when we're back there, given us very good information, helped us move forward with the Placer County Conservation Plan. I see that each of us has a little more gray hair since those days, but I just wanted to thank you for all the 20 years of my term, that the leadership you provided for the county, giving us good information, setting up quality meetings with elected and staff members back in the nation's capital. So keep up the good work. It's been 20 good years. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you.
I would like to add, yes, thank you. I think that many people may not realize that annually, the Board members are able to go back to Washington, DC, and it is these two gentlemen who make appointments with our legislative, our congressional representatives, where we go and we lobby for Placer County for our interests, whether it's our forests, our transportation, anything that affects the county. And thank you guys so much for doing that, and you really do a great job for us and for Placer County, and we all appreciate it very much. I'm going to open it up to the public. Anyone like to make a comment or have questions about this item? Anyone online?
I see no one online, Chair.
Okay, I guess we wowed everybody. Thank you very much for the presentation, gentlemen, and look forward to seeing you in the spring.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
I'd like to hear from you after November 6. Okay, we're going to move on to our next, our ten- Okay, we're going to move on to our next, our 10:00 item. Board of Supervisors, Commendation Recognizing Old Town Pizza. And I'm going to turn this over to Supervisor Landon.
Great, thank you. Well, it is my pleasure and honor to recognize a business today that is just really an icon throughout Placer County and all of our cities in South Placer, as well as in Auburn. And so I'm just going to move forward with reading this commendation. In the matter of a commendation recognizing Old Town Pizza in celebration of its 25th anniversary of service to the people of Placer County. Whereas, Old Town Pizza is celebrating its 25th anniversary of service to the people of Placer County, and it is appropriate at this time to highlight its history of achievements and underscore the positive impact it has had within the communities it serves. And whereas, soon after its original location opened in Auburn on July 20, 1999, Old Town Pizza was purchased by the Browning family in November 2002. And its owners were determined to provide a full-service dining experience that was themed to the town's history. And whereas, buoyed by the success of their new adventure, the Browning family opened a second location in Lincoln in July 2004 and launched their third location in Roseville in 2015, designing that facility around a railroad theme to echo the integral character of downtown Roseville. And whereas, as part of their ongoing efforts to provide better service to their patrons, the Brownings relocated the Lincoln Old Town Pizza to a new property in 2019, which enabled them to create the community's first rooftop dining customer experience and open sliced beer company. And whereas, in 2021, the Brownings purchased a new property to establish the largest Old Town Pizza facility for the flagship Auburn location. And whereas, in 2024, the Browning family purchased the former Roseville Post Office on Vernon Street and planned to convert the aging property into a vibrant, friendly family restaurant. And whereas, in support of the greater community, Old Town Pizza hosts and participates in numerous fundraising efforts for local schools, public safety agencies, and nonprofit organizations, including Newcastle Elementary and Charter School, Placer County Sheriff's Office, Search and Rescue, Gigi's Playhouse, Boys and Girls Club of Placer County, Auburn Trails Alliance, and many others. And whereas, by contributing to the success and sustainability of the community in which it does business, Old Town Pizza enhances the quality of life for the residents in Placer County. Now, therefore, let it be known that the above commendation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Placer at a regular meeting held on October 22, 2024, on behalf of the citizens of Placer County. The Placer County Board of Supervisor hereby recognizes Old Town Pizza in celebration of its 25th anniversary of service to the people of Placer County.
Okay, yeah. That's wonderful. So we approve it first and then open it up for comment? Okay, we're going to open it. Board members, comments? Wow, my lights are lighting up. Supervisor Gore?
How wonderful. We get to celebrate Old Town Pizza and you all today. And I am especially excited that you're going to move your location, open up a brand new location in the heart of Roseville. You guys do a terrific job. My other office used to be across the street from Old Town. So when I was needing lunch, if I was smart, I got a salad, but usually I got a slice of pizza because that tasted a whole lot better. But I just really appreciate not only the work you all have done, but you've provided great jobs. Your staff are wonderful, and then you give them back to our community. And that's really what we want to see local businesses do, right? We want to encourage our local businesses to be successful. We patronize our local businesses. And then you, in turn, invest in our community. So thank you very, very much.
Supervisor Gustafson?
Well, I can't, I mean, I echo all of that. You guys have done a tremendous service to our communities and are such an example of how small business can really thrive here in Placer County. And I appreciate the wisdom you often share in suggesting new ideas for how the county and our cities should look at supporting small businesses. So thank you, Reese. Thanks for the whole team. You know, you do a great job for our community, and thank you.
Supervisor Landon?
Well, I just want to say thank you for being just an amazing example of what small business is meant to be. And I think you have all just been, you've done such a great job of showing resilience and entrepreneurship and innovation and just, you're always thinking of the next thing. And I just admire that about you so much and appreciate that you always give back to the community. You are just, you're really quite alight. And so I just really appreciate you all for everything that you do.
Supervisor Holmes?
I just have to say, your family has been amazing. You started out in that little place in Old Town, kind of like a hole in the wall. It was so busy, you couldn't get in there. You have to order the pizza at Manson's. But what you've done to particularly in Auburn, with the old Salvation Army building, you renovated that, brought more people into Auburn. It's just a wonderful, wonderful building and facility. And then you can't go anywhere in Placer County anymore without having a pizza, Old Town Pizza, whether it's Lincoln, Roseville, not in Rockland yet, but we'll work on that for you. But thank you so much for all you've done for our community since you've been in Auburn for the last 25 years. Thank you.
And I would like to special, add a special thank you to you for always being so supportive of the county. We've held a lot of events there. You have allowed us to hold a lot of events and have supported, whether it's county staff or agencies that, you know, we contract with for appreciation nights and stuff like that. I think it's wonderful the way you support the community as well. And I think it's unanimous, we all love pizza. Thank you very much for that. Want to open it up to the public? Would you like to make comments on Old Town Pizza? Anyone online?
I see no one online, Chair.
Okay, well, in that case, would you like to come up and comment, please?
Can I make a motion?
Oh, yes, we do need it. Okay, motion by Gustafson. And second by Gore. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Motion passes. Now, please come up and have your comments. Yes.
Much appreciate the commendation. We love Placer County. Hopefully, that's obvious. I've been blessed with two 25-year careers in my life. First was Hewlett Packard, which is who introduced me to Placer County back in 1979. I didn't actually move to Placer County until 1983. And loved working for Hewlett Packard. One of the things that I love most about them is their commitment to their employees and how important employees were in order to provide the product or service to the guests. The guests are what matter, and you can't do it without great employees. And so that was instilled in me, and Hewlett Packard also was great in giving back. They offered my job, they offered my dad a chance to take a full year paid-off program to work for the United Way. I was just a young boy at the time, but it meant a lot to me that a company would invest in their employees to give back to the community. And now, my second 25-year career is entirely in Placer County, and there's just no better place. In order for us to determine how to move forward and get better every day, we have to listen, right? We have to listen to guests, we have to listen to employees, we have to listen to city leaders. And we've had a chance to take two very long road trips throughout the United States. And one of the objectives of those two road trips was to visit small businesses all across the country. Mama Pop Coffee Shops, Mama Pop Pizza Shops, all kinds of businesses to learn, to learn and understand what people like and their changes. And people change over time on what they like, right? And we have to be able to shift and pivot to stay relevant and to, for guests to still enjoy coming to Old Town Pizza. And I appreciate the collaboration with Placer County and with the city of Lincoln and Roseville and Auburn. And it's just, it's like a match made in heaven. So thank you very much. Really appreciate all of you.
Thank you, thank you. Congratulations to you. You want to go down and present? Okay, come forward. We're going to take a picture presenting your certificate.
You can come too. It's family business, right?
Come right up here. Just stand right here. Okay. So we're going to do this. I'm going to shake your hand.
Okay.
Where's your shaking hand? Okay, there you go. Thank you. Congratulations to you.
Thank you very much.
We do love the pizza. Okay, we're going to move on to our 10-10 item. Another fun occasion, Board of Supervisors, this is a commendation recognizing Robert Bob Eckert. And I'm going to turn this over to Supervisor Gustafson.
Well, good morning. And I think this might have been a bit of a surprise for Mr. Eckert. Is that correct?
Yes.
That we're doing a commendation recognizing Robert Bob Eckert for a lifetime of achievements and contributions in Placer County. Whereas, Robert Bob Eckert, born in 1930, has lived most of his life in Placer County, contributing immensely to the community, both as a resident and as a general contractor. And whereas, Bob brought city water to the town of Colfax, a feat that forever changed the community through his dedication in securing a $750,000 federal grant and a $450,000 state grant, which led to the creation of a water infrastructure system when the town had none. And whereas, Bob built significant commercial landmarks, including the Mountain Village Office Complex and the Sierra Market Shopping Center, bringing much-needed business, commerce, and opportunities to residents. And he built many homes, banks, and veterinary offices, leaving a lasting imprint on the region's landscape. And whereas, Bob's contributions to Colfax and Placer County extended beyond construction as he and his late wife Veda ran the pizza factory for a time, enhancing the local economy. And Bob helped countless families by providing financing for homes and businesses, showing his generosity and commitment to his fellow citizens. And whereas, Bob is known to create work for those in financial need, ensuring their dignity and livelihood, and to demonstrate selfless acts of kindness, such as the restoration of the wooden cross in Newcastle, which he replaced with a new metal one simply out of goodwill. And whereas, Bob and Veda were married for 63 years, creating a partnership that reflected their deep commitment to family, community, and service. And Bob continues to manage his residential and commercial rental properties at the age of 94, embodying resilience and dedication. Now, therefore, let it be known that the above commendation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Placer at a regular meeting held on October 22, 2024, on behalf of the citizens of Placer County. The Board of Supervisors recognizes Robert Bob Eckert for his lifetime of achievements, unwavering contributions to the growth and well-being of Placer County, and his extraordinary generosity, integrity, and dedication to its residents. Well, so much to be said, and it's such a true example of what makes Placer County so special, is the number of people that step forward and contribute to our communities. And they're all throughout our county. We have over 400,000 residents. And I think about this legacy, Bob, of what you've done for Colfax. It was an underserved, and in many ways still is, an underserved community. And the work and the effort you've brought to that community means so much. So thank you for your service. I'll turn it over.
Can I just clap?
Yes, yes. Board members like to comment? Supervisor Gore?
Well, I will say thank you. As I was listening to Supervisor Gustafson read about what you have done to serve our community, I know that there's a whole lot more to it than that. And I also know that it's not easy to give up time doing fun things to invest in our community, to do something you really care about, which is making a community better. And so I just want to say thank you. And it's so nice that we have the opportunity to recognize in public the work that you have done. So really appreciate your efforts, and it's an honor to be able to recognize you this morning.
Supervisor Landon?
Thank you, Bob. I don't have the pleasure of knowing you personally, but it was really quite a joy getting to learn about the amazing legacy that you are leaving for Placer County. And I think the theme today is pizza, apparently, because both of our commendations have to do with pizza. So I just want to say thank you so much for your commitment to our community and to Colfax and to making sure that you were a good neighbor for the people who live there and that you made the community a better place to be.
And I would like to add to that is it seems like a very small reward for a lifetime of dedication and service that you've given all of us in Placer County. Thank you so much for what you've done. We really, truly appreciate it, and best wishes to you always. I'm sure Supervisor Holmes would have something to say, so maybe we'll let him speak when he comes back. But in the meantime, is there anyone out there that would like to make comments? Comments about this item? Anyone online?
I see no one online, Chair.
Any of you want to share?
There we go. Come on, Andy.
I'm just going to say, Andy Fisher, County Parks Administrator, one of my childhood homes that I spent growing up in was an Eckert, built home on Eckert Way. So it's a delight to me as well to see the man who built my childhood home get some recognition. So thank you.
That's really nice.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board for approval of this commendation.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Gustafson, second by Gore. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Of course not. Motion passes. Congratulations to you and actually to your family, because I know they're behind you, supporting you all the way and able to do this.
Would you like to come up?
First, come on up and tell us how you feel. Right there, through the microphone.
Am I to speak?
Yes, please. We would love to hear from you.
We came here at seven years old in Auburn and spent most of my life here. Went to great schools here in Auburn and also Colfax. And one of the things about building, I brings up that there was only one building inspector in Placer County when I first started building. His name was Bob Watson. And you didn't go in and get a permit, he'd come around and find where you were building, and you paid him. But anyway, I thought that might be interesting. But I thank you for everything.
Thank you very much.
Well, let's turn around, we'll look at the camera. And you need to thank all of your friends who brought this forward.
I see Ed Coons back there.
All these people brought this forward for you. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations again. Okay, we're going to move on to our 10.
I'm sorry? Am I supposed to say there's cupcakes in the other room for anybody who would like to join the celebration? I think there's over 100 cupcakes over there for us all.
Which room are, which room are we going to?
Over in the A.
Conference Room A.
So if anybody would like a cupcake to celebrate.
Please go and help them celebrate. Okay. We're going to move on to our 10-20 item, Agriculture, Parks, and Natural Resources. We're going to talk about the Creekview Ranch Villas. All righty, good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for the cupcakes. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Old Town Pizza. I'm Sean Johnson with the Placer County Parks Trails and Open Space, here to present the annexation of Creekview Ranch subdivision, Villages 1 through 3 into zone of benefit 169. Creekview Ranch Villages 1 through 3 subdivision is located on PFE Road, north of Antelope Road. And if approved today, this portion of the subdivision will eventually add 424 single-family parcels into the zone of benefit. The current assessment for the zone of benefit is $661 per year. The annexation of the Villages 1 through 3 will not alter the fee at this time. However, the fee will reduce as the villages are built out. The assessment provides maintenance funding for the Dry Creek Park area, which includes Dry Creek Community Park on the east side of Wall Legra Road and Doyle Ranch Park to the west. There are several recreational amenities within these two parks. There are soccer fields, lacrosse fields, baseball and softball, basketball, tennis, multi-stage exercise equipment stations, picnic areas, restrooms, large play structures with shade covers, horseshoes, and of course, the multi-use trails. And this paved Class 1 multi-use trail extends from Walter Avenue to Cook Riola Road along the south side of Dry Creek Corridor with additional paved trails that will eventually connect to Placer Vineyards Community. And with the completion of the Wall Legra Bridge, provided a safer solution to bicycle and pedestrian access to the paved trail system compared to normal pedestrian crossings. Creekview Ranch Villages 1 through 3 will add Class 1 trails along PFE Road and the Dry Creek Corridor to the existing zone of benefit. If approved today, the addition of this project into County Service Area 28, Zone of Benefit 169, will contribute to maintaining these existing and future recreational amenities for all to enjoy. So we are asking the board to consider these three items today. Conduct a public hearing to consider all protests, if any, to the annexation of Creekview Ranch Villages 1 through 3 property, located north of PFE Road and east of Cook Riola Road in the West Placer, in West Placer, into the boundary of County Service Area Number 28, Zone of Benefit 169, Dry Creek Park to provide trail services and determine whether written protests to the annexation have been received from a majority of property owners whom own more than 50% of the assessed value of all taxable property within the proposed zone. Two, adopt a resolution annexing the Creekview Ranch Villages 1 through 3 into County Service Area Number 28, Zone of Benefit 169, Dry Creek Park, to provide park and trail services. And finally, to determine if the proposed action is consistent with the Creekview Ranch Project Final Environmental Impact Review Report, certified by the Board of Supervisors on April 8, 2023. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I'm going to bring it to the board. Anyone have questions, comments? Okay, open it up. Anyone out there? Oh, that's correct. I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone from the public like to come up and comment on this item? Anyone online?
I see no one online, Chair.
Okay. Going to close the public hearing. Now we'll ask anyone in the audience if you have any comments. And okay, seeing none, we're going to... Okay, clerk, would you announce the protests?
The clerk's office received one ballot in favor.
Okay. Good deal. And I'll bring it back to the board for action.
I'll move approval. And I'll second.
Okay, motion by Landon, second by Gore. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see. We're going to move on to our 10-30 item. County Executive, reallocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Barbara McAllister, Assistant Budget Officer with Placer County. And I am here today to discuss a request to reallocate American Rescue Plan Act funds. On March 11, 2021, the Board, I'm sorry, the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA, was signed into law. One aspect of this act was to establish the Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund and the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. Placer County was awarded a direct allocation of $77,370,739 of these funds. In June of 2021, the Board approved general uses of the funds within the eligible use categories that were described in the interim final rule. In August of 2021, the Board approved more specific uses of the funds, and since that time has made other adjustments to the allocations. The current allocation of funds is shown in the table on page 1 of the staff report. As shown in the table, $5 million of ARPA is allocated to the SB 863 Mental Health Facility Project, located at the Bill Santucci Justice Center. This is a $22.6 million project. And along with the $5 million in ARPA is funded by $4.3 million in general funds, $3.8 million in public safety funds, and $9.5 million provided by the Board of State and Community Corrections, also known as BSCC. The BSCC recently notified staff that Placer County is eligible for an additional $4.32 million in funding. So this means that we can now pull back some of the other sources of funds that we had dedicated to this project and make them available for other sources, for other uses, excuse me. After considering the options, staff determined that reallocating the ARPA funds to the Highway 49 Wastewater Capacity Improvement Project would be an effective and timely use of ARPA funds. As a reminder, the Highway 49 Wastewater Capacity Improvement Project will increase the capacity of the existing Highway 49 wastewater gravity trunk line to accommodate sewer flows associated with current approved and planned growth in Sewer Maintenance District 1 in the North Auburn area. And the project has already been awarded, allocated $4 million in ARPA funds. The total cost of this project is $21 million, but it's only partially funded at this time. Because of that, the project will be completed in phases as funding becomes available. And the addition of $5 million of ARPA funding to this project will allow more of this project to be completed sooner. In addition, shifting these funds to this existing ARPA project will allow the funds to be obligated and spent by the deadline set by the U.S. Treasury, which is December 31, 2024, for all funds to be obligated, and December 31, 2026, for all funds to be expended. There's another item following this one, to request the award of a construction contract for the Highway 49 project that would be primarily funded with ARPA funds and is predicated on the approval of this request to reallocate ARPA funds. So to conclude, your board has requested to approve a reallocation of $5 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds from the SB 863 Mental Health Facility Project to the Highway 49 Wastewater Capacity Improvement Project. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, board members. Any questions, comments? No?
I have just a comment.
Okay.
I just want to thank staff and CEO's office for allowing these funds to be used for North Auburn. And it takes the stress off of our ratepayers who are already overburdened with the cost of sewer in North Auburn.
I'm going to open up to the public. Anyone have comments on this? Anyone online?
I see no one online, Chair.
Okay, bring it back to the board for action. Second, motion by Holmes, second by Gustafson. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? Motion passes. And Supervisor Gore is not present.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that report. I'm going to move on to our 10-35 item, which is Public Works, Highway 49 Wastewater Capacity Improvement Project. Good morning, all. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Jones, members of the board. My name is Jean Hansen. I'm a senior engineer with Public Works, environmental engineering. And I'm here with Assistant Director Kevin Bell, also over Public Works. So the action items before you today are to approve the award of competitive bid number 20546 to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Steve P. Rados, Incorporated of Santa Ana, California, for the construction of Phase 1 of the Highway 49 Wastewater Capacity Improvement Project, PJ02550, in the amount of $10,786,241, which includes the base bid amount and bid additives A and B, and authorize the Director of Public Works to execute construction contract number 001335, subject to county council and risk management concurrence. The second action requested is to authorize the Director of Public Works or designee to execute change orders in an amount not to exceed $210,000, consistent with Public Contract Code Section 20142 and the Placer County procurement policy. The third action is to approve a fiscal year 2425 budget amendment, number AM 01068, for Cost Center 12012, Sua Maintenance District 1, in the amount of $10,996,241, with corresponding offsetting revenue from the Sacramento Area Council of Government Grant Funds and ARPA funds. And the final item is to determine the proposed actions are consistent with the mitigated negative declaration for the Highway 49 Wastewater Capacity Improvement Project, adopted by the Board of Supervisors on November 27, 2023.
Okay, thank you for that. I'll bring it to the board. Any comments, questions? Supervisor Gustafson?
Yes, Jean, nice to meet you this morning. I know that we've had quite a few emails and calls and concerns about the public noticing regarding this alternative and its location. Could you speak to that? And I do know you held a public workshop last week. And could you speak to that as well?
Yes, we completed the environmental review in November of 2023. Earlier this year, in May, we actually attended the North Auburn MAC meeting, had a presentation there. And there was a postcard that went out to those within 100 feet of the alignment for the first phase of the project, which is what we're seeking approval for today. And then, again, last week, as you mentioned, we did hold another public meeting for those in that neighborhood. Anybody along the alignment, there's a few different neighborhoods that it goes through. So we did hold a public meeting. It was last Wednesday, I believe.
Great. I think the concern had been that the original postcard that went out and the notifications on North Auburn for the North Auburn MAC meeting, that not everybody was aware of the alignment. And that was corrected for this latest workshop?
Yeah, we did try to do some additional outreach and try to make sure everyone that would be impacted was made aware of the alignment in the most recent meeting.
Okay. And then in that meeting, what were the concerns? Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend.
Yeah.
So I wanted to know what were the concerns that were expressed? And how can we address those?
Yeah, and I know there are some residents here. And if I miss something, you know, I'm sure they're more than welcome to correct me. But I think, generally speaking, it's the construction impacts, right? The pipeline will be through some neighborhoods. It'll be in front of people's homes. And there will be real construction impacts associated with that alignment. You know, we are working with the... We did include a number of items in the agreement for the contractor to try to mitigate those as much as possible. But there are real impacts. It's noise and delays, the impacts to the roadway. So all of those things that, you know, are real, real impacts for those folks. I think that was primarily the concerns. There were some questions about the alignment that was selected and why it was selected. And we had a number of, you know, answered a number of questions related to that. And that's being driven, in large part, by Caltrans requirement that if there's any other viable alternatives, that those be pursued rather than locating a utility longitudinally in Caltrans right-of-way. And so that's largely what drove this alignment. Again, I know there's concerns about why that neighborhood and why that location. And those are real concerns. But this is an important project for the entire North Auburn community. And, you know, we looked at many different alternatives over the last several years to try to figure out where it could go. And there's no perfect alignment. Somebody's always going to be impacted. And so recognize that.
And what do we anticipate the timing of the construction to be?
Yeah, so it depends on the contractor. So we anticipate, if your board approves us awarding, that we would award in the next couple of weeks. The contractor could begin work this fall. That's up to them. They have a year and a half to complete the project. But whether they start this fall, I would, you know, it's up to the contractor. But I would guess that they'd likely wait and start in the spring. Again, it's up to the contractor, so I can't guarantee that. And I will say, you know, when they're working and laying pipe, they'll excavate, lay pipe, and continue to move down the street. So they shouldn't be in front of somebody's house for, you know, a year and a half, right? They should be digging, placing pipe, backfilling, and temporary paving. And then at the end, there would be some paving that would come back at some point.
Well, I appreciate that. I would hope that we, and I know you will, treat this as if it were your front yard that somebody was going through and be able to plate. There's many technologies to close up the trench and allow people access in and out, and that we're doing a lot of dust control work and talking to the contractor and monitoring that, and making sure people have advanced notice.
Yes.
Because I think often, if people just know it's coming and when it's going to be there, it's the unknown that creates frustration. You're sitting there, and it's Friday afternoon, and the trench is open. What's happening for the weekend? So I think, given the number of issues that we've heard, I'd really like to see a very assertive role for the county inspections and monitoring and communication with the constituents. But happy to hear more about that as they come up.
And then, to that point, we actually included in the... The next item is a construction management contract. We actually required a public outreach team that could be available and help us with that communication. And again, once we have the contractor on board, we can get a little bit better sense of the schedule and the timing and plan to do some additional outreach to the residents with that information.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments by board members? I'll open it up to the public. Anyone in the public like to comment on this item? Please come forward. Good morning.
Good morning, members of the Board. My name is Bill Combs, and I live at 4271 Richardson Drive in the Brookcrest subdivision in North Auburn. My concerns here that I want to express to you today are not so much about the funding of the project, but rather the procedure that's been gone through to get to this point. The primary public notification was done through a notice in the Sacramento Bee in a rather obscure part of the Bee that probably very few, if any, people read. That's the crux of my concern. And I believe the proper procedure here would have been to have individual property notifications through the U.S. mail to each individual property owner affected by the project. I speak from experience. I have the privilege of working for many years in the planning department and was very familiar with the procedures we would use, which would have included, which would have begun with the individual property notices. And it would have included a very clear description of what kind of impacts to expect from this project. And, you know, as staff has indicated, there will be significant impacts. It will dramatically affect day-to-day life for people affected by the project. If that kind of information had been made available back a year, almost a year ago now, I think you would have had a very different public reaction. I mean, this project has pretty much, you might say, gone under the radar. And very few people even knew it was happening until recently. And that's when it came to my attention and several of my neighbors. So we have been active in contacting and working with the staff. Staff has been very cooperative and helpful. Staff has been very cooperative and helpful, and I think their intentions were good at the beginning, but I think in retrospect, in my opinion, the outreach was not effective, and it should have been more extensive. My pitch to the board would be to direct staff to take this back to the beginning and go through the kind of individual property owner notifications that I'm familiar with that I oversaw for the planning department for many years. That would be my recommendation as far as how to handle the project goes and how to redo it in a better way. Now, there is another thought I have about another option, and that is, one of the options that's been examined is the highway, complete Highway 49 alignment. Now, right now, it's the southernmost, 70% of the project roughly is in the Caltrans right-of-way, from Edgewood Road to Courts Drive. It's about 70% of the full length of the pipeline, and then the other remaining northernmost 30% goes through residential neighborhoods like the one I live in. So the roadblock to making the Highway 49 alignment work, and everybody, I think, agrees that would be probably the ideal solution, is a Caltrans policy about not permitting work in their right-of-way if there are alternative locations available, and so they were looking at Courts Drive, Park Drive, and Richardson as the alternative alignment. Again, that, going through these subdivisions, will be, you know, fraught with all sorts of problems that I would like, obviously like to see avoided. So, second part of my suggestion to the board is, I put together a proposal that if, and I made copies to distribute to everyone, a proposal to, for this board to contact Caltrans and to make, to urge the proper decision-makers at Caltrans to reconsider their position about use, use of the right-of-way. So with that, I'll start with staff. And my thinking is that if myself, or even my, people in my Board of Directors of Brookcrest were to approach Caltrans, it may not really carry much weight, so to speak. So, however, given the considerable influence of your board, if you were to support this kind of a proposal and make that outreach to Caltrans, I think it would have a considerable impact and quite possibly cause a reversal of their, their policy. So I put together that, I guess I'm over, over time, sorry. I'll just, yeah, I'll wrap up. So it's just a rough draft I came up with. I would welcome the staff to edit it or change it, however they saw appropriate, but I think it has a viable chance, again, if coming from your board to Caltrans to say, please reconsider a full Highway 49 alignment, that it will be in the public's interest to avoid the neighborhood conflicts, which inevitably will arise otherwise, and I'm hoping that that, that kind of action from your board would, would mean a lot. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else, please come forward?
Good morning, Supervisors and Placer County residents. I'm placing this letter of my concerns about the safety of the proposed Highway 49 wastewater capacity improvement project into the record, as I believe there are numerous mistakes, errors, or misrepresentations.
Excuse me, I don't mean to stop you. Can we get your name for the record?
Stephen Hutchins.
Hutchins, thank you, Stephen.
There are numerous mistakes, errors, and misrepresentations that will seriously affect public safety and harm properties in the project that are listed in the mitigation negative declaration, which your group approved last November 27th at this forum. The core issue is, it was not disclosed to any residents in notification that this proposal involves excavation through areas of high likelihood of highly hazardous and known carcinogens, such as naturally or occurring asbestos, and we believe that the exposure risks have been greatly understated in the report you've already approved and are inaccurate, and the county's mitigation plans in their report are minimal at best. Specific problems, HAZ 3, page 3 of the mitigation negative declaration states, dust mitigation measures will be taken only if NOA is encountered or actually seen by construction workers. They also state that a geologist will make spot checks, which makes the likelihood of any exposures opened or turned into a dust, which is an airborne release of asbestos, will not be addressed until after it has been discovered and distributed into the air. The most damning portion is in Section 3.9, Page 3-34, Paragraph 4, which states, "The geology in the project area is known to include naturally occurring asbestos materials." They state that the California Geological Survey Special Report 190, which extensively maps the areas of NOA minerals in Placer County, that the majority of the project is cross, or small area of the southern portion of the project is crossing through most likely to contain NOA materials. The remaining length of the alignment is mapped as moderately. This statement is completely inaccurate. The maps from Special Report 190, which are on the Placer County website specifically for North Auburn, show that the Phase 1 area from Richardson Drive to Dry Creek, along Richards, along Richardson Drive from Joga to Dry Creek, are 98% within the most likely section. I've included a map that shows that, and even a sixth grader can see that very clearly. So they've stated that this section is in the moderate, when in fact it is in high likelihood of exposing these materials and creating a contamination of which zero exposure to airborne asbestos is allowable by state or Placer County air regulations. It's a toxin, it's a carcinogen, and it is deadly. Conclusion is that I suggest that we withhold fundings for the construction project until this mitigation plan has been reviewed and revised before going forward with any such construction, and that we also do core sampling along this Phase 1 north section of the route, which is clearly within the map area showing high likelihood of deposits of naturally occurring asbestos. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else like to come and comment? Please come forward. Good morning.
Good morning. Chair Jones, Supervisors Karen and Daniel Wayne Nader. I've been following this since it came before the North Auburn MAC in May, when the consultant for the county said that there was an urgency about this project, that there was an overcapacity in the system that if, in a high rain event, that there was the risk of manhole covers blowing off. So obviously, it has some serious implications to all of North Auburn, so I started following it. In fact, I wrote an article on it after that MAC meeting that was published in the Auburn Journal. This is really significant in that it's a 24-inch pipe that's going to be going through this residential area, so we're talking about a fairly large trench, and I know it's only going to be five feet, Kevin, I know you told me that, because it's going to be a forced main, so it doesn't have to be as deep as traditionally sewer lines have to be for gravity systems. What I'm concerned about is that in May, obviously, the engineering work had already been done on it, and so the dye had been cast, so to speak, before the community was even engaged in the process, because there should have been a real discussion in the community about what the implications were, what the alternatives were for the community to weigh in on. This has a, obviously, to me, it has something that we recently experienced with the rezone for high-density housing. The community felt, again, the dye had been cast before they were able to even weigh in on it. The EIR had already started on the 74, or 70, yeah, 74 lots, so that was already moving very much forward before the community got engaged. I guess my point is, we really need to make an effort, as a county, to really engage community early on on these big decisions that have implications. You're in a tough spot. You were on the rezone, you had a gun to your head, basically, about the state, you had to do something. You're in a tough spot now, because there's nine, what, $9.5 million that's sitting there from the ARPA funds. If you don't use it in the next year, you lose it. So you don't have much of a choice, but you've got to move forward. I think what Bill is proposing and the others to go back to Caltrans is a great idea, should have happened two years ago, but you're in a situation now, we lose those funds, what are we going to replace it with? So it's a tough situation, you guys are put in a bad spot here, should have been something that worked out way back when, as far as I'm concerned. So I just wanted to pass that along to you, that we need to be, work harder to engage the community on issues way ahead of this coming, coming before you.
Thank you for your comments. Good morning.
Hello, my name is Robyn Delay. I hadn't planned to speak today, but my husband already spoke, but I live on Brookcrest Drive. One of the things about the asbestos that we're talking about is it's probably going to be mitigated by water, they're going to wet it down and then try and keep it wet. Well, unfortunately, many people don't realize that there is actually a pond that is used by wildlife, which will be directly impacted by any runoff that happens during this process. That park is a home to a fox, for sure, because we see them all the time, we see coyote, we see owl, we see quail, we see all kinds of water, you know, fowl, and, and we've had heron in that pond. That is an important pond to the community of animals that live in our area. I would hate to see that pond end up being a casualty of this situation. Now, the serpentine is there, I can go in my yard today and pick up serpentine from my front yard. I actually intended to bring some, but then I thought it was probably a little, little too dramatic, but it's there, and it's probably containing asbestos, and the maps clearly show that. So I think we are all concerned that there hasn't been a real show of a geological study, of geological course testing, or even really employing somebody to do the negative impact report that seems to have a really solid understanding of what this means. I checked their website, I saw nothing about a geological background. I mean, the owner of the company actually has a law degree, so I am really deeply concerned. And their air quality section of their, of their website also indicates things like understanding tailpipe emissions. Well, asbestos is really different from tailpipe emissions. We really need to have people on this project who understand what this means from a geological perspective. So I really urge you to, please, 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 consider the wildlife, consider the water, consider the air, consider how prevalent those winds are that rip across our neighborhood, they are huge winds. We are on an upslope, it's going to take anything that goes airborne, and it's going to drive it a long way, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments, appreciate it. Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Laurie Sekluna, I'm also a resident on Richardson Drive. When I think about this whole thing, the only thing I can think of is constituents. We're your constituents, you know, we voted you in the office, and this is going to affect the Greens, it's going to affect over 100 homes in our neighborhood on Richardson, and there's, you know, how many people live in each home, so it's going to affect hundreds and hundreds of individuals. And I want to thank Bill here for his effort, everything he's done, he's been a blessing to our neighborhood with his experience, and Cindy, you're our supervisor, and so I would just urge you all, you know, Cindy for sure, if not all of you, to contact Caltrans, because, you know, they're, they've been put on this pedestal that whatever Caltrans says, that's it, it's in stone, you can't bump them, and I just don't think that's right. They're not a dictatorship, you know? I'm sure some of the funding they get and whatever, such as yourselves, comes from our property taxes, and I could go on that for quite a while, but I just want to urge you to please, please put out an effort to talk to Caltrans and head this off if you can, okay? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, appreciate it. Anyone else like to comment? Would you like to address some of the concerns?
Sure. Oh.
Did you check online? Oh, I'm sorry, I did not check online.
There's no online chair.
Oh, thank goodness. Okay, Kevin.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Jones. Yeah, so I'll address a couple of things quickly, I'm happy to answer any other questions that your board has as well, but in terms of the noticing, you can always do more, right? We did comply with the requirements of SEQA, so we're in compliance with the required noticing. Could we have done more? We absolutely could have done more, so. The, the issue, you know, contacting Caltrans, we did have a number of meetings with Caltrans when we were looking at the different alternatives. One of those meetings, we looked at the alignment on Highway 49, and I think, you know, they said, well, yeah, if there are other viable alternatives, it's the same conversation that we've been having, and they actually pointed out some alternatives. This one included that, that we could pursue, that would be considered a viable alternative in their minds, and that's part of, you know, again, part of what drove us down this alignment. The, the naturally occurring asbestos, that's the NOA that was discussed, you know, the environmental document was approved in November of last year, so I'd have to go back and look at that. I do believe there are mitigation measures if there are, oh, it sounds like council has it, so she could potentially speak to that better than I could, I don't have it in front of me, but I do believe that if it's identified that, that it exists, that there are mitigation measures, and we will definitely be looking for that and working with our team to make sure that that is being monitored. And then the, the last thing I'll mention is the funding timeline, I think Mr. Nader mentioned that, you know, we, we do have this funding that's available to us right now, that we have to, for ARPA, we have to essentially award this contract by the end of the year. For the SECOG funding, which is another portion of the funding, it's about three and a half million, they actually want us to start incurring costs before the end of the year, and so in order to do that, we, we really are in a tough spot. If we don't move forward with something, then it's likely we won't have costs being incurred before the end of the year, and potentially we'd lose that funding. And so just wanted to point that out, that we are in a, it's a tough situation, we've been trying to push this project to get it done as quickly as we can to meet these timelines and, and be able to take advantage of the funding that, as Supervisor Holmes mentioned, it does benefit the ratepayers of North Auburn by having this funding brought in from outside of the district, but it's, it is a tough, tough situation, tough, tough spot.
Supervisor Holmes?
Yeah, thank you, Kevin, I want to appreciate all those comments from the public. The SECOG funding, if we don't utilize that as soon as possible, SECOG, there's other projects out there that they could transfer that money to another project if we don't do our due diligence, and it seems like that's what we've done. And again, the ARPA money is very important to this, if we lose that ARPA money, then we're kind of stuck. If we went to Caltrans again, and that, how long would that take? We'd have two years of waiting just for, even if we got an answer, we'd have to go out of contract again, there's just so many reasons why that's not feasible. I know you gave it a good effort to talk to Caltrans, but you did the best you could, and it's not going to work, so. Those are my comments, I just wanted everybody to understand where we're at here.
I'll let you go last. Supervisor Gustafson?
I just had a quick question, and then I'll reserve some more comments. How deep, remind me the depth of the trench?
Yeah, so it's, you know, on average, it's about five feet deep, it could go a little bit deeper in some areas.
And how wide will the trench be?
So it's likely, you know, two-foot-wide pipe, and you have a foot on either side, so it's probably about a four-foot-wide trench typically.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, just, that was my question, I'll come back for comment.
Supervisor Gore?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I really appreciate the residents coming in and sharing their concerns, and I certainly understand the frustration. And I certainly understand the frustration about not being aware of a project sooner than later, right? And so the, the first thing about disclosure, and I appreciate that we did what SEQA said we need to do, but I, I am reminded that nobody reads the Sacramento Bee any longer. And I think that we, as a board and our staff with SEDRA and Public Works and any of these projects, we need to not rely on disclosing in the Sacramento Bee. And yes, maybe in our local paper, but when it comes to communicating with residents about our projects, we really need to look at how we do that in a way that makes sure our residents are aware, right? We, we changed our noticing requirements from 300 feet to at least 30 properties, right? Because we had rural projects and people weren't being noticed. So in a situation like this, like Sacramento Bee, yeah, I know it's the law, but we really need to be purposeful and thoughtful about how we do disclosure. And so, you know, I appreciate that, and, but we, you know, we did it in accordance, and then residents found out, which is good. Question, and I probably know the answer, right? Why does Caltrans not want us to utilize Highway 49? And I know the answer. Highway 49 is a huge transportation corridor, and the impacts on the traffic would be tremendous. That being said, the impacts on the residents with this different alignment can't be understated. They will, it will affect the residents in that neighborhood. But then it's this unfortunate trade-off, right? Like thousands of people every single day and a couple of hundred residents. I don't want to ignore the fact that that's really important to the residents. And it sounds like the work we have to do is to make sure the contractor does their job to mitigate those impacts and communicate with the residents, so the residents know ahead of time when their property is going to be dug up. And all those things that, my understanding, are in the contract, which I think is really important. And then the mitigation measures for the naturally occurring asbestos, right? There's asbestos throughout this county. And I know that probably there are many projects that we have done in our county, and I'm probably going to look at Karen, because I don't see our planning team in the room, but we have lots of projects. This county has asbestos, naturally occurring asbestos. It's in the ground. We dig wells, it's there, but we mitigate it for it, right? And it sounds like there are mitigation measures to address that, because it's something that is naturally occurring. So it sounds like Karen will address that, but I think it's, this isn't unfortunately unusual that we have naturally occurring asbestos, and then we have mitigation measures to address it. I'll let you comment when you're ready to comment. If everyone else is done.
I'm going to go over here to Supervisor Landon before.
Thank you. I 100% agree with everything you just said and had jotted down a couple of my own notes that were very similar to what you said, Supervisor Gore. I, I very much support the idea of us exploring, you know, what do we want noticing to look like, not just in this circumstance, but across departments and impacts on neighbors. I think we, we should go above and beyond, you know, what we are being asked to do by law when we can and when it makes sense. And so I really empathize with you as neighbors of the impacts that you're going to be seeing. And I think, you know, Kevin very readily stated that there are going to be impacts, and it is not going to be fun or enjoyable, and it's going to be a negative impact on your quality of life until the project is completed. And I also see the, the cost benefit of, which doesn't help your situation at all, but looking at the impacts on Highway 49, as Supervisor Gore stated, of just how many people would be impacted if it were along 49, and what that would look like for the thousands of people that are going back and forth on that road every day. And so I do very much empathize with what you're saying. And I'm hoping that, as Supervisor Gustafson stated at the beginning, of just being able to find ways that those impacts can be greatly reduced as we have that conversation moving forward and talk about the contractor and what they will be required to do. And I know you have a great representative in Supervisor Gustafson, who is very responsive, responsive to constituent concerns, and hopefully if there is anything that comes up in the future, that those issues can be addressed quickly so that it doesn't become a chronic issue. So those are a few of my comments.
Okay, Supervisor Gustafson?
Thank you. A couple of things. One is I agree on notifications. We've been talking about this for a while, and, and, you know, you, I appreciate that you follow the policy. But I also know that water and sewer infrastructure is an engineering feat. It's not just a, what does the community want, but it's what does the community have to have. You have to be able to adequately get rid of waste discharge and do it in the most effective way. The other thing that you didn't bring up, that I am aware of, is on Highway 49 or in any Caltrans right-of-way, it will be more expensive for the life of the project for any repairs, any issues, any cleaning, any, any operations, because you'll be setting up road controls on a major state highway to deal with that. So it's not just the initial cost. So I can understand why it's more cost-effective for everybody, but how do we address these residents? And the first thing I heard today that I hadn't heard before was asbestos and the mitigation plan for, for that. We do have asbestos everywhere. I don't know how much worse it is here versus at 49 or for other residents. So how do we mitigate that, and how do we do it effectively, both for the pond as well as the airborne? And how do we reduce that? The other thing is, how long will the trenches be open? Because the biggest impact is right when they're digging and laying the pipe. And typically, contractors want to get done cost-effectively and get through and get it done very quickly. In my career in water and sewer operations, you know, we would write into the contract how, you know, how long a particular section, how much could be open and left open and for what duration. Do we have any of that potentially that we could modify in, in the contract?
Yeah, I don't know if we have anything in the current contract, but it is something that we could look at with the contractor.
Yeah.
And potentially change, you know, do a change order or something to minimize the amount of, the length of.
Open trench.
Open trench, I think is what you're referring to.
Right. Open trench and then inflating to make sure people can get in and out if it has to remain open because of some, some issue.
Yeah.
Long-term, once this is in the ground, you won't be touching it from above ground, maybe forever, because the new technologies are that we're slip lining pipes and we're able to repair all of those through, you know, through the inspection and other projections. So I know that the, it's this temporary construction that is the most impactful, and how can we minimize that, working with the community and make sure that we've mitigated their concerns? This asbestos is not something I'm as familiar with. So do you feel confident that we could augment the contract to provide adequate mitigation measures for that?
Yeah, and I, I think Karen might speak to the NOA, but if, if it's, if it's not adequate at this point, we could work with the contractor to ensure that it, that there are protections in place.
Well, as they've raised, if we, if we do some geotech work and we find that there is asbestos and it is becoming airborne as we excavate, what, you know, can those measures be addressed?
Can I perhaps respond to this at this point?
Yeah.
First of all, natural, asbestos naturally occurring is something we deal with with almost every environmental document we do, especially in the North Auburn area, we see it quite a bit. There is a provision, there's a couple of provisions in here. And bear in mind that this mitigated negative declaration came to the board on November 27th at its time limit 10:30 a.m. to receive comments, and it was approved by the board. Under the hazardous, hazards and hazardous materials, section 3.9 in this mitigated negative declaration, it discusses at length the issues of hazards. It requires, first of all, hazard mitigation measure number one. Prior to initiating construction of the proposed project, the contractor shall submit a written safety program to Placer County and shall receive a positive review from the county. This plan shall include at a minimum, I don't know if you want me to read it all, but I'll give you the basics, that there has to be fire and medical emergency response, access control plan, nature and information for a safety director-manager responsible for managing the safety, health, and environmental risks for the contractor, compliance or exceedance with OSHA requirements. Next, we have hazardous mitigation number two. This is if any contaminated soils or other hazardous materials are encountered during soil removal operation during construction, there is a mitigation measure requiring a hazardous materials contingency plan. That is to ensure that any contractors, the subcontractors are aware of what to do in terms of undertaking storage, removal, transportation disposal. Obviously, that plan has to be in compliance with state law. Finally, we have hazardous mitigation measure number three. And this is specifically on page 3-36 to 3-37 of the mitigated negative declaration, which by the way, is online. Easiest way to access is to go to the November 27th agenda, and you can pull it up from the item. This mitigation measure states, due to the potential presence of naturally occurring asbestos minerals along the pipeline alignment, the following measures shall be implemented during soil excavation and handling activities. One, periodic observations by a geologist. I would point out the issues that have been raised about who prepared this. First of all, these are professionals, and under SEQA, we're allowed to rely on those who have prepared. But I would point out that it's a licensed geologist that would be one who is familiar with identification of naturally occurring asbestos minerals, shall be conducted as trench excavation progresses. The frequency of observation will be at the discretion of the county. Testing for naturally occurring asbestos minerals shall be conducted on suspect rock if observed and as directed by the geologist. Also requires a dust mitigation plan be implemented in accordance with the California Air Resources Board and the Placer County Air Pollution Control District. And finally, a worker health and safety program shall be implemented. As this board is well aware, SEQA mitigation measures must be implemented or there are severe consequences for the same. I'd also like to loop back to the issue of noticing. Mr. Combs is suggesting that you were required to personally notice everybody within what is now 500 feet. That is for a land use development application project. This is a capital improvement utility project. State law requires that it be noticed within a public of general circulation, which Sacramento County is, within 10 days prior to the hearing. While I recognize that the board is interested in additional noticing, and as Kevin was saying, there's nothing wrong with that, it should be, it's courtesy noticing, because the minute you step over the line and say, no, 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 we're going to require public noticing as part of the legal process, while you can go above and beyond, I suggest that that is not the most prudent thing to do. Obviously, we published this on the web, you can provide that notice, we had the public outreach, you can always have more public outreach. But in terms of the legal requirements, it's important for us to stay in the confines of the public, the government code, and what we have to do in order to defend any action of this county. I know this is what the board just wants to hear on noticing. Again, noticing can happen. You could do postcards to everybody on this alignment, that's no problem. But requiring that is quite a different thing in terms of being able to defend us.
Okay, Supervisor Gustafson?
Thank you, Karen. I appreciate the clarification. Well, this is the map that I'm talking about, and I just need clarification. If this special area was reflected in that document, and this is the one that they handed out, this is the Special Report 190, and where that line is, making sure that, that we're clear on that. So the issues I'm, I'm concerned with, because I don't want to lose the funding, I do believe that there are definitely short-term impacts to the residents, that I think we can do a better job of managing projects to minimize those and make sure we're working with people. But this asbestos and making sure it's not just periodic examinations, it would seem that as they're digging, it can't just be once a week, because they're making progress every day. So, you know, at least as one of the supervisors representing this area, I'd like to ask, how impactful would it be to delay this for two weeks until we can address those issues and bring those elements back to better protect the community?
Yeah, I think.
And be honest about.
Yeah.
The impacts on the financial risk.
I think the risk is on the SECOG funding.
Okay.
Because we have to incur costs and be able to invoice them before the end of the year, is what they've told us. And so we, when you award a contract, there's a couple of weeks before they'll, well, we have 10 days to award it. And then they, they have some time before they'll submit anything. We do believe that we would incur some costs on the construction management, maybe reviewing submittals before the end of the year. But any, any time we delay this is risk that we don't actually have costs that we can invoice to SECOG, and there's, that funding is potentially at risk, is what we've been communicated from SECOG.
Supervisor Gustafson, I hear your concern, but perhaps, I, I heard Kevin say, we could make a change order, right? So we could move forward with this contract, and you can have conversations with their staff about the issue of the naturally occurring asbestos, right? And, and maybe it's you reporting back that that's been done. But I, I would hate to hold this up, but I think you could make a change order to the contract to make sure that this issue has been addressed, and maybe then, you know, let us know. That might be, that would be my suggestion versus delaying it for a couple of weeks.
Another thought on that is, if you look at the mitigation measure, the periodic observation, staff along with the SEQA environmental review staff would be working to implement the mitigation measure, including this mitigation measure. Periodic observations allow staff to work with that geologist, work with the contractor to address when, in the geologist's professional opinion, it would be wise and prudent to review. So I think I, what I'm suggesting is if the board provides staff with that direction to, in fact, accelerate that discussion through the SEQA process, that that might assist.
Is that something that can, you can accommodate?
Yes, yeah. We can, we can definitely coordinate with the geologist, then the construction management team, and, and the residents, and on what that plan looks like.
Right. I know you've talked about a notice before, and I understand the requirement and the courtesy to notice, and that when we are required, we put it in the Sacramento Bee because of what it is. But I have often, I, I've asked this a number of times, can we possibly run it in an Auburn, you know, circulation, whether it's Gold Country Media, depending on where it is? Here, perhaps the Auburn Journal, since it affects Auburn, that kind of a thing. I mean, if it's something we could consider, maybe if any, if we suspect any kind of controversy, maybe that we could, you know, go there. It's not like the cost of sending out thousands and thousands of postcards. And also too, I'm wondering about, is it possible that you could provide just the board with the safety plan once it's completed?
Yeah, we could, we could definitely return to the board and, and show what that plan looks like for the inspection.
Yeah. I think it would be interesting. I, I hope the other board members would like to have a copy, but I would appreciate it.
Yeah, we could definitely share it with the board.
Right. And I do think that some of the things that we're requesting, I'm requesting in particular, are going to add cost to the contract, and I understand that, and I'm willing to fight for that. I think making sure that we have the public safety in mind. We're already inconveniencing them, but I don't want to be in a safety situation with any question about this periodic looking, you know, examining by the geologist. And then as far as limits to that open trench, that's going to be more costly, I understand, but it is the best way to minimize the impacts to the residents. So what would the contractor propose on that? So I mean, I think these are solvable in change orders to the project, but that doesn't get to what some of the residents want to do, which is reexamine the whole alignment. And I think that is the most challenging thing, you know, for, for all of us, understanding that then we would lose significant amount of funding for the project, as well as I don't know that it would result in a, in a. don't know that it would result in a change in the alignment. Once this is in the ground, you won't, I mean, this is already a sixty-year-old pipe that's in the ground. It won't be in our lifetimes that we'll see this ever dug up. And as I mentioned, technology has changed so dramatically just in the last ten or fifteen years in what we're doing with lining of pipes to repair them and making those repairs from internal, even enforcement. You know, that you can do that work and it's only expediting that. So I think once it's in the ground, it won't be an impact to people's daily lives at all. It's just this construction period. And how can we serve our people the best and most cost-effectively and protect their issues? So that's, I just, I can understand the public's frustration of how will we see these change orders? How can we be assured of that if they're not hearing it today from us in our commitment? So I'd ask Kevin, what do you think in managing these projects that you could do?
Yeah, I think we will definitely sit down with the contractor, sit down with the CM firm and the geologist and figure out a plan and then we'll share that. We'll continue to meet with the residents.
Can you go ahead and call for another meeting and notify everybody to come back and address those?
We can do that, yeah. We can do, happy to do a big meeting, happy to do individual meetings, whatever is the most effective for the residents. And we can talk to folks about that too, about the best approach. Yeah, or both.
If I could just make one clarification here, and this has to do with the public contract code, because this was a contract that was awarded pursuant to that process. And this is just to clarify which comes first. So DPW is the monitoring and implementing department for all the mitigation measures. So DPW would be working with whoever the geologist is that would be contracted with to provide this particular monitoring. And that process, I would suggest, needs to happen first. If in fact, change orders occur, Kevin can't at this point, nobody from DPW nor I can commit to pre-award modifications, but certainly that is on the table for the future.
Chair, the question?
Yeah, please.
Is it possible to do, I guess this is for you, I don't know, an email list like there was, like there is for Hidden Falls, where, you know, people in the neighborhood that have interests can let you know and then that you can disseminate information that way as well?
Yeah, we, at the public meeting, we actually started an email list from last week. Happy to add anybody else to that list. And we would send notifications about different steps along the way.
Just to clarify, that would be a department-generated email list.
Yes.
We do not have one, a formal email list, notification email list for the county.
Right, okay, got it.
Okay, Supervisor Holmes.
Oh, I just want to remind everybody that our next item is a professional services agreement with the company to provide professional construction management, construction surveying, inspection, materials testing, and related services for Phase One. So much of what we're being asked to do is already in our next item. So I just wanted to bring that out.
Supervisor Gustafson.
Yeah, I agree with Supervisor Holmes. It's just that staff, it's going to increase costs to have shorter trenching open at any given time and plating to be put in place. So I just want to make sure that I've been, that they have some sense of where the board is willing to go for those discussions in order to bring it back to address the public's concerns.
Yeah, and maybe real quick, I'll point out that we are already requiring that they have plating available and they can
Right.
...cover a trench and
Right.
In terms of how the length of the trench open, you know, it could be a change order, but they may already be planning for something that's pretty minimal. We'll work with the contract.
Well, and of course, it depends on what time of year they start.
Yep.
If they start now and we have winter storms, it's going to be less of a trench open, you would hope.
Yeah.
So that there isn't flooding and damage to the trench, so.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so it's my turn. I wanted to ask that when this is completed, this new sewer pipe in capacity, what would you predict is going to be the life of this new, of this construction?
Yeah, so the pipe itself is sixty to eighty years. And then it could be extended with some of the technologies that Supervisor Gustafson referenced in terms of lining. Their cure-in-place pipe lining that you actually slip inside the existing pipe to extend the life of it. So it could go over a hundred years in terms of the life of the pipe itself.
Okay. Like I know, I mean, part of the stuff that I think we need to let people know is, is we try to be conscious of, you know, not spending taxpayer dollars for things that we really need to complete and do. We need to fix that aged sewer system. And the more money that we can get in grants and funds elsewhere, then the less of your taxpayer dollars we have to spend, even though I know the inconvenience, been there, done that, and it's not a fun thing. But hopefully, we fix it and it goes on and even outlasts our children. So, okay.
I'm sorry, one final question.
Please.
Noise, that I was just going back over the list of comments that were raised. What are the hours of construction for the contract?
I believe it is seven AM to six PM, Monday through Saturday.
The report states six AM till eight PM.
That might be summertime, you'd have to double check. So I would like, I would like you to address that, yeah.
Yeah, so the contract itself is shorter than I think what the environmental document indicated. So we've limited it beyond what was included in the environmental document. And I think that might be the discrepancy.
So can you confirm, the contract says?
Seven AM to six PM.
Seven AM to six PM.
Will they have to use lights? I mean, because it's getting dark pretty early now.
Yeah, and again, it comes back to when they would actually start construction.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Supervisor Gustafson?
I just, I'm sorry, my light was still on, that I just want to make sure that we're working with the community on that. If they have a Saturday event at their home, if they, I mean, often in my work, we had to work around people's family reunions and events at their home that they were planning on. And you don't want an open trench and construction work on a Saturday. If you can avoid it, right? Because there's a lot of family-type activities happening in those times. So I'd really like to see the community involved in that scheduling and working to accommodate that. I know it's less typical of the county to get involved in that, but in my career, we did a lot of workarounds to accommodate the residents we were serving. So I would hope we could do the same here.
Supervisor Gore.
Unless there's no other discussion, then I am...
I'm afraid our public comment is closed, but you can talk to Kevin after...
We have to do it Caltrans. I mean, on forty-nine, when they keep...
I can't take your comments right now, but you can address Kevin after we're through...
Yeah, just, you need to hear it.
Kevin can inform us later, because our public comment is closed. I'm sorry. You can let us know. Talk to the gentleman and let us know the concerns, okay? Okay, good. Because I have to bring it back now to the board for action.
And I would like to move approval of the item. And I don't, did we need to make any changes? I mean, you've heard direction from us, so I'm just going to go ahead and move approval of the item.
Okay, we have a motion by Gore and a second by Holmes. Roll call. Holmes?
Hi.
Gustafson?
I'm going to vote no, because I'd like to wait two weeks and have another meeting with the public. I just want to make that clear.
Gore?
Aye.
Landon?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. But I guess we're going to sit tight and hear item number seven, Public Works, Highway Forty-Nine Waste Water Capacity Improvement Project. Phase one, continuation. Good morning.
So once again, excuse me, Jean Hansen, Senior Engineer, Public Works, Environmental Engineering. The actions before you related to the construction management services are first to approve and authorize the Director of Public Works or designate to execute professional services agreement number zero-zero-one-three-six-three with Unico Engineering Incorporated of Folsom, California to provide construction management, construction surveying, inspection, materials testing, and related services for Phase One of the Highway Forty-Nine Waste Water Capacity Improvement Project in an amount not to exceed one million, one hundred ninety-eight thousand, six hundred ninety-eight dollars, and to execute contract amendments up to one hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine, subject to county council and risk management concurrence. The second action is to approve a fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five budget amendment, number AM zero-one-zero-six-seven, for cost center one-two-zero-one-two, Seaw Maintenance District One, in the amount of one million, three hundred eighteen thousand, five hundred sixty-seven, with corresponding offsetting revenue from the Sacramento Area Council of Government grant funds. And the third action item is to determine the proposed actions are consistent with the mitigated negative declaration for the Highway Forty-Nine Waste Water Capacity Improvement Project adopted by the Board of Supervisors on November twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-three. And the same background relates to this project. We've discussed it already, so we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I'll bring it to the board. Supervisor Gustafson?
With this contract, because it does include the inspections, the material testing, and the management of the contract, do we have flexibility if there are additional requirements that we do in the change orders with the contractor to augment this contract as well? I know there's contingency up to a hundred and twenty thousand. I don't know if that's going to be adequate.
So, yeah, we do have that contingency. If there, if anything else is identified, then we need to return to the board. We would return to the board for an additional change if that's needed.
Okay. Well, depending on what happens with the remainder of the contract and other things, I want to make sure that I've expressed my support for adding additional funds to make sure that we've inspected adequately.
Okay, we're going to open this up for public comment. So anyone, please come forward.
Thank you again. I just wanted to mention that the work on forty-nine from Edgewood to Quartz will all be done in the evening, not during the day, so there won't be traffic impact. It'll be done in the evening. So I don't know why Caltrans is saying no, but that's what's going to happen with that section. It's going to be done in the evening time. The other thing is, and I'll just make this real quick, unless I don't understand my rights, I'm not obligated to purchase any newspaper. I'm not obligated to look at my email just because I have an email account. If you're doing something, the county, the city, the state is going to do something that's going to directly impact me in the face, such as this project, whether you're obligated or whether it's a courtesy, you have to notify me by mail or come and knock on my front door. Because I'm not obligated to look at the newspaper. I'm not obligated to even watch the news because I have a TV. Unless you know something I don't know, I would like to be informed about that. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Hello.
Hi. I keep hearing people talking about which agencies are going to be involved. I haven't heard a lot of discussion about air quality. Have the air quality people been consulted? Do they have every intention of putting monitors at our site to monitor for the asbestos that will be released? Because I mean, let's face it, I mean, there's going to be asbestos released. I mean, we already know that. So it seems like there should be a preventative element of this to make sure that we're not trying to go back to, "Let's clean up asbestos," which is never great. It's like, let's stop asbestos before it goes everywhere. And I really feel it's important that we, as a community, are being kept reassured that it's not in our neighborhood. I mean, this doesn't just affect our personal health and the health of our pets and the local wildlife, but it also is going to adversely affect our property values if it gets to a situation where we're trying to clean it up. I mean, this is a really, really, really scary situation for all of us. I mean, we really don't want, I don't want my children exposed to asbestos. I mean, they're far too young. I mean, I have teenagers. They don't need to be exposed to asbestos. So where is the role of the air quality piece? What monitoring is going to be done? And is it really honestly going to be done before they're breaking ground? Because no amount of covering things up with plates or whatever is going to stop asbestos if we get a really strong wind through our community. Because our community is windy. We are very, very windy. So I guess that's my only comment.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to comment? Anyone online?
I see no one online, Chair.
Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the board for further questions. I have one question. I'm curious if you know, how do they mitigate if we have asbestos? I mean, is there have to be a certain level? And do you know how? I mean, do we spray it down with water, as someone said? I'm not an expert.
Yeah, and I'm not an expert either. And we'll rely on the geologist, but I do believe that it is making sure that it does not get airborne, which is by keeping it wet. There's a big, a big piece of that.
Supervisor Gustafson?
Correct. And then the plating is really for traffic disruption, not for, but keeping the trench small also helps mitigate against the wind blowing. So the less open trench, the less likely you have the material escape. But there might be other measures. I don't know. It's been a few years since I've been directly involved, so.
Supervisor Landon?
I just, speaking to the public comment question, I want to say, Karen, when you were reading, you mentioned air pollution control, I think, in the negative deck. So there was something in there. I don't remember what it was about air pollution control.
There is, in the mitigated negative declaration, this is section three-point-three, is on air quality. There's a robust discussion. It is pointed out that this project is within the jurisdiction of the Placer County Air Pollution Control District. And the Air District adopts air quality rules and issues permits consistent with the county and state regulations. This has to do with criteria pollutants, with toxic air contaminants, the mitigated negative declaration. And I would point out that during the course of any CEQA review, our responsible agencies, of which Placer Air Pollution Control District is one, was consulted and has concluded that by complying with all the rules and regulations for the Air District in effect at the time of construction, which includes Rule Two-O-Two Visible Emissions, Rule Two-O-Five Nuisances, Rule Two-Seventeen Cut Back and Emulsified Asphalt Paving Materials, Rule Two-Two-Eight Fugitive Dust, Trackout onto Public Roadways, Minimum Dust Control Requirements, Wind-Driven Fugitive Dust Control, and Five-O-One General Permit Requirements, that by meeting, provided the project meets all these requirements and permit restrictions, that there was found to be no impact.
Okay. All right, there are no further questions by the board. Let's bring it back for action.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Holmes, a second by Gore. Roll call, please.
I'm going to vote yes.
Gore?
Aye.
Landon?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you for coming and expressing your concerns. It's important for us to know your concerns so that we can hope to address it. And I know that Kevin, Kevin is willing to speak to you guys. I know your supervisor is as well. And so, don't stop giving us information. Thank you all. Okay, we're going to move on to... Okay, we're going to move on to Department Item Number Nine. It's a Human Resources Updates to the Uncodified Schedule of Classifications and Compensation Ordinance. Good morning, Suzanne.
Good afternoon.
I should say, meeting.
Well, almost there. I seem to always get you right before lunch. My name is Suzanne Holloway, HR Manager, on behalf of the Human Resources Department. I am requesting that your board approve the introduction of an ordinance waiving oral reading to amend the Uncodified Schedule of Classifications and Compensation to create classifications of Capital Improvements Technician 1 and Capital Improvements Technician 2. As you're aware, our office typically will conduct position studies and analyses to ensure that our class specifications are up to date and that people are adequately classified. This particular item is on behalf of Facilities Management. The department had reached out to HR and had asked us to conduct a position study of an engineering technician assigned to the Capital Improvements Division to ensure that it was appropriately classified. As a result of that analysis, it was determined that the position was very specialized and narrow in scope. The duties that are being performed are very exclusive to capital improvements projects as opposed to the more broad-based technical engineering functions that are assigned to engineering technicians countywide. As a result, it was recommended that a new flexibly allocated classification of Capital Improvements Technician be created to more adequately describe the duties assigned. As a result of an analysis of the relevant labor market, consideration of promotional salary requirements within a series and a review of internal alignment within the county, it was recommended that the entry-level Capital Improvements Technician 1 be set at Salary Grade General 85, and the journey-level Capital Improvements Technician 2 be set at Salary Grade 97. These recommendations were approved by the interim HR Director as well as Facilities Management Executive Management Staff and Local 39, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, board members. Supervisor Landon.
Oh, sorry.
Board members, no questions? Open it up to the public. Anyone out there like to make a comment on this? Anyone online?
I see no one online, Chair.
Okay, bring it back to the board for action.
I'll second.
Motion by Holmes, second by Landon. You beat her out, I think. All those, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to item number 10, Procurement. Bulk Fuel Hunt &amp; Sons LLC. Good, good afternoon.
Yeah, yep, yep, almost late morning.
Yeah.
Good, good late morning, Chair Jones, Honorable Board, Ms. Schwab and Mr. Chatney. I'm Ben Bremer. I'm with Procurement Services. I'm standing in for John Manning, who's out right now. I'm requesting your board's approval on four action items. The first one's to approve the award of competitive bid invitation for bids number 20548 for bulk fuel products to Hunt &amp; Sons LLC, a Delaware Limited Liability Company in the maximum amount of $2,500,000 for the period of November 1, 2024 through October 31, 2025. Second's to approve the option to renew the resulting contract for two additional one-year terms in the maximum amount of $2,500,000 annually. And third, to authorize change orders up to a maximum commutative amount of $100,000 annually, consistent with Placer County procurement policy. And finally, the fourth action item is to authorize the purchasing manager to sign all related documents subject to department concurrence and available funding. Little background, I'll make this quick. The Department of Public Works, Facilities Management and Placer County Fire require a contract with the supplier for the delivery of bulk fuel products to fuel stations and generators throughout the county. Our current contract expires at the end of this month, so October 31, 2024. To continue these services, Procurement Services solicited invitation for bid number 20548 on behalf of the departments. And just a note on this one, this is a cooperative solicitation where we got the requirements of the Town of Truckee, North Tahoe Public Utility District, Tahoe City Utility District and Placer County Water. Just a note also, these agencies will follow their own policies if they elect to contract based off with a successful bidder. Two bids were received prior to the bid closing date. Procurement Services performed the evaluation and the lowest responsive and responsible bidder is Hunt &amp; Sons LLC of Sacramento, California, and no protests were received. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. Board members? Questions by board members? No? Anyone in the public like to make a comment? Anyone online?
I see no one online, Chair.
Okay, we're going to bring it back to the board for action. Second? Who second? Okay. Motion by Holmes, second by Gustafson. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good day. Okay, we're going to move on to, we're on a roll here. Item number 11, Public Works. Road Maintenance Equipment Purchases. Good morning.
Yeah, for a few more minutes. Yeah, good late morning, board members. Matt Randall, Deputy Director with the Department of Public Works, here with a couple of road maintenance equipment purchase actions for you to consider. So run through the actions really quick. First thing is to approve a fiscal year 2024-25 budget amendment AM 1063 for Cost Center 19007 Road Maintenance in the amount of $1,780,184 with corresponding offsetting revenue from the highway user tax account and Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account Fund. We're also asking you to authorize the addition of designated road equipment that's listed in Attachment A to the fiscal year 2425 Capital Asset List. Approve the purchase of road equipment and delegate authority to the purchasing manager to execute related purchase orders, including those in excess of $100,000, and to sign all required documents. And finally, determine the proposed actions are not projects pursuant to CEQA Guidelines Section 15378. So just a couple of quick background points. Obviously, in road maintenance, we have a bunch of road maintenance or road construction equipment for the various things that we do. We've come to you, to the board, the last few, last couple of years with budget amendment requests to address a couple of issues. One is the timeframe it takes to buy equipment. Some of the items, like one of the items on the list is a new Vector truck. 20 to 24 months is the expected delivery timeline. A Vector truck, just so you know, too, it's like a big vacuum cleaner that we use to clean out culverts and ditches and things like that. So super important to maintaining drainage. Other items include emerging issues. So another item on the list is, let's see here, for some utility tractors and related attachments. So these are tractors, and the attachments are actually mowers and masticators to help with our efforts to do roadside vegetation removal to address wildfire risk. So something obviously super important to our operations. So a couple other items, some plow attachments, which are important to snow removal, a grader also important to snow removal, and an emulsion sprayer, which that basically is used with our patching operation. So all of these are included, or they'll be funded with our, with the gas tax primarily, our State Highway User Tax Account Fund and Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account Funds. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, bring it back to the board members. Questions, comments? Seeing none, open it up to the public. Anyone out there? Anyone online like to comment?
I see no one online, Chair.
Okay, going to bring it back to the board for action. Move approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Gustafson, second by Gore. Rule call, please. Gore?
Aye.
Landon?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Gustafson?
Yes.
Jones?
Aye.
Thank you very much. That motion passes.
Thank you.
And now we're going to move on to item 11B. Placer County Transit 2024 Comprehensive Operational Analysis and Proposed Service Plan Implementation. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair and members of the board. Jamie Wright with the Department of Public Works Transit Division. Today I also have with me Mike Costa with the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency, and he and his team actually led this effort on behalf of us transit operators. So he is also here to answer any questions that you may have. So before you today is the Western Placer Comprehensive Operational Analysis, or COA, for Placer County Transit as well as Auburn Transit. We brought this item to your board on May 7, 2024, just as an update, as we were heading into all of the work being done, just to give you an update. And before you today is the final plan for approval. So the COA, or the Comprehensive Operational Analysis, is a service plan that looks at each of our operations. It recommends or plans for service changes over the next five years based on review of existing conditions, transit needs and transit performance and public input. The acceptance of the plan does certainly not require us to implement all the COA recommendations. We do that in partnership with the cities and jurisdictions that we operate on behalf of, and that tends to be a lot of the times very dependent on funding and operational need within those jurisdictions. The goal of the COA was to adjust our routes and services to better meet ridership demand as well as growth in our region. We are coordinating with the City of Roseville, who did a separate COA, but we did this in partnership to look at our region as a whole. And it is to establish a more integrated and coordinated transit network between the three agencies, PCT, Auburn Transit and Roseville Transit. And from this plan, we will be developing our Short Range Transit Planner, SRTP, which we'll get into more detail on the actual transit enhancements and recommendations. Throughout this process, there was a lot of stakeholder coordination. So we had a Technical Advisory Committee, or TAC, which consisted of the transit operators, PCTPA member organizations, social service organizations, transit riders and local stakeholders. We did hold six meetings between July 2023 through September 2024 to review memos and advise the process and findings and the conclusions of the COA. We also have our Transit Operators Working Group, or TOG, which has also representatives from the region's three public transit operators, the PCTPA's member jurisdictional agencies, as well as the Western Placer Consolidated Transportation Services Agency stakeholders. And then there was certainly ongoing discussion with all of us as transit operators and those that are operating the systems. Public outreach, Mike's team at the PCTPA actually led this effort on behalf of all of the transit agencies, but we had a project page on the PCTPA website. There was onboard surveys, and we certainly participated in getting those out on PCT's buses, and the other agencies did as well. We had a community online needs survey, POP events at community events within each of the jurisdictions that we operate in, equity focus groups, priorities and trade-off survey, and the public review of the draft COA held with also virtual meetings. The recommended service plan, so the project team did work closely with the project's TAC, us as transit operators and local jurisdictions throughout the process. The development and performance benchmarks for existing and new services were also developed and analyzing opportunities to increase ridership and improve service productivity. We did assess a variety of potential transit service changes and identified the service enhancements that would provide the higher ridership and productivity and reasonable operating cost impacts for each agency. I'll get into kind of each jurisdiction that we looked at and the recommended service changes for each area. So first is the Auburn Colfax On-Demand Service Area. That is coordinated between Placer County Transit as well as Auburn Transit. And what we did is we looked at the two dialer ride areas that we service, which are now both serviced by the same on-demand app, Go South Placer. And it really focused on Placer County Transit servicing certain portions of the 49 Corridor and Auburn Transit servicing other portions of the 49 Corridor. So we had a more holistic reach to ridership within the region. And so Auburn will focus on service east of the SR 49 Corridor, and Placer County Transit will focus on service west of the SR 49 Corridor. These changes actually have already taken place in our partnership with Auburn and getting them implemented into the Go South Placer app. So these changes actually are live. They didn't really have any cost impact to us, and so, and again, it does service the the region in a, in a better way. The other option that we did do is expand the Auburn On-Demand up into the Bowman Area, servicing more, more of the North Auburn area that was not serviced in the past. Part of this recommendation was also to not restore the Auburn Loop or the Confluence Fixed Route Services for Auburn Transit, and that's just due to kind of low ridership and then where their on-demand service has taken place. Annual change, increase in boardings is about 728 boardings, or 8%, and the operational cost savings, and this really is for Auburn in their reduction of the Auburn Loop and the Confluence Fixed Route Service of about 2% or $17,216. The Auburn Area Colfax Fixed Route, so Route 30, due to Auburn discontinuing their Auburn Loop, we are looking at extending Route 30 into downtown Auburn as part of this phased approach, and we will be looking at routing, how we can get some of the larger buses into downtown, and that will certainly be part of the STRP process. I'm sorry, SRTP process. We are expecting an increase in boardings of about 18% or 5,385 riders, as well as an increased cost to Placer County Transit of just over $37,000. Again, that will be done in partnership with the City of Auburn, as they will pick up those costs for extending Route 30. Route 10, which is our Light Rail Route, so that route travels between Auburn and Light Rail. It is primarily paid for by Placer County, but we do have partnerships within each of the jurisdictions that this route travels through that will be contributing to this as well. So the enhancements there would be to operate a 30-minute service instead of 60-minute service between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 12:00 p.m. And then change our westbound routing from Galleria Boulevard to match our eastbound routing, so you can go east and west and hit the same stops, stops. And then one area that we are not servicing but would certainly tie in with Roseville's fixed route services is to have this route actually service the Taylor Road Park and Ride for connections with Roseville Transit. There is an increased, expected increase of about 26% in ridership, or just under 16,000 riders, and an increased cost of $236,000 or just over, and that is primarily due to moving that 30-minute service, moving to the 30-minute service from our 60-minute Route 60 is our downtown commuter program. That service runs all the way from Alt Colfax into downtown Sacramento. Throughout COVID, we've had a lot of challenges with this particular route due to many people now working from home and a decrease, a significant decrease in our commuter ridership. Right now, we run two buses as Placer County Transit into downtown. We are filling about one of them, and the other one's heading down with about five, maybe 10 passengers on a good day. But that continues to change as the state changes their work-from-home policies. So the recommendation is to reduce that route down to one bus in the morning and one bus in the afternoon, but we will be surveying our ridership on the commuter service to kind of understand what does the future look like for them. what does the future look like for them and what are their needs? So there is an asterisk here that, you know, this one may not be reduced depending on need for the commuter service. If we were to decrease down to one bus, we are looking at a decrease in ridership of 26%, but an overall savings of about $270,000, or 46% of that budget. Route 20, which operates in our Rockland-Lincoln corridor. There is a recommendation to separate Route 20 into an east and a westbound loop, which has been supported by the City of Rockland. And then there is a recommendation to run weekday buses every 30 minutes on both routes between 12:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m. instead of 60 minutes. The City of Rockland does not support the increased frequency, and that was mentioned at the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency. So there is an appendix kind of noting that. And due to us needing to work with our partner jurisdictions on funding for these types of enhancements, we will be focusing on the separation of the route into east and west, but not the increased frequency.
Yes, please.
Is that just because of the increased cost?
Yes.
Their concern increased cost?
Yeah. So further into Lincoln, we have Route 70, which is our Lincoln Circulator. There is a recommendation to extend to the Park and Ride, which is currently underutilized in that area. And this would also connect with the Rapid Link, which would be servicing between Lincoln, the hospital district in Roseville, and then down into Light Rail in Sacramento. It also may be a connection point for other jurisdictions to meet up with us. For example, if a Yuba Sutter decides to run a bus from Marysville with a potential connection in Sheridan, they would connect with us at this particular location, and that continues to be a point of discussion as we work with other jurisdictions and regional partners. And we are also looking to extend the First Street and Third Street between R. and Joyner. This covers a little more of their downtown corridor. That is currently underserved with fixed route service. Expected increased boardings is about 7%, or just over 1,100 passengers. And the expected increase in cost is just about 2% at $12,000. The Lincoln Dialer Ride. We do have our heaviest ridership during peak school times, and that's because we have a lot of our student population out in that region utilizing our dialeride. So there is a recommendation to look at expanding those hours. But again, Lincoln has not been supportive of these changes due to the costs. Granite Bay. Currently, Placer County Transit offers on-demand service out in Granite Bay. We do two hours in the morning and then two hours in the afternoon. It can be very difficult to kind of access that service. And we find that most of our ridership is actually connecting into Roseville to utilize either retail or hospital venues or doctors' offices over there. So we are working with the City of Roseville to understand if they would be able to implement this into their dialeride service, which actually operates in pretty close proximity in that corridor. And then we would be looking at extending those hours to more of a block period. So instead of 9:00 to 11:00 and 2:00 to 4:00, it may be 10:00 to 3:00 o'clock that we're offering the service out there. That will continue to be worked on with the City of Roseville through the short-range transit planning process. In summary, if all planned elements were to be implemented, ridership on both systems would increase by 65,000 boardings annually, or 26%. And the total approximate cost would be about $811,000, or 8% annually. As I mentioned, some of our neighboring and partnering jurisdictions are having a hard time with those type of increases. So we will be looking at how we can implement these changes cost-effectively and with their partnership included. Planned elements, again, can be implemented individually depending on the availability of funds and agreements with the jurisdiction. And the upcoming Short Range Transit Plan will merge the COA with the Roseville COA to look at us as a full South Placer region. Going into the short-range transit planning process, we will be looking at supplemental services with the West Placer Consolidated Transit Group. We will also be looking at Rapid Link and what that project's performance criteria. And essentially, it's a three-year pilot. And so how does that impact our overall routes as local providers? We will be looking at transit capital and fleet infrastructure requirements based on any expansions that we're looking to do. Marketing and customer information strategies will also be a big target for us as we head through that process. Changing routes and things like that does require us to certainly get out and make sure that we are making the riders know or understand kind of what we are doing and how we are changing things out there. We will be looking at financial forecasts of the transit agencies as well as the service and maintenance operation of our fleets and the implementation strategy and plan for each agency and how we will move those recommendations forward over the next five years. So before you today, I am requesting the adoption of a resolution to approve Placer County Transit's 2024 Comprehensive Operational Analysis and Proposed Service Plan Implementation, subject to available funding and in partnership and agreement with local jurisdictions who contract with Placer County Transit to provide transit services on their behalf. Second, determine that the proposed action is exempt from environmental review pursuant to Sequoia Guideline Section 15306. And with that, I will take any questions you guys might have.
Okay, bring it back to the board for comments, questions? Supervisor Gore.
Thank you, and thank you, Jamie. A question about Route 60, which is the discontinuation of the route going all the way from Colfax into downtown Sacramento. Do you have routes that connect to the City of Roseville and their direct service into downtown Roseville?
Yeah, our Route 10 would, especially with the implementation of adding the Taylor Road Park and Ride. Most of their commuter services do connect out of that particular location.
Right, okay, great. And then, sorry, it's been a little while. What's the City of Roseville's Arrow service? Is that their dialeride, or what is Arrow?
It is, the Arrow is the City of Roseville's on-demand dialeride as well as their paratransit service. So very similar to us, they co-mingle their services.
Great, and then I shared this with you earlier, and I know it was brought up in the planning process. But as we look at the increase in development in West Roseville Placer Vineyards as it is growing like faster than we've had projects in the past, is growing a lot. And then we'll have Placer 1 growing, right? People living out there in the next year. I just want to make sure we keep our eye on, as the need may increase. Because in five years from now, the number of people out in West Roseville will be much larger than we have now, and they're already asking us about service. So I just want to make sure we keep our eye on that. And then I really appreciate the fact that y'all are looking at if there's a way to partner with like the City of Roseville, other jurisdictions, right? That could be a lot less expensive to contract that service than try to provide it ourselves.
Yes, so through the short-range transit planning process, we certainly will be looking at that with our partners over at the City of Roseville. In five years, it will also be reevaluated through our next short-range transit planning process. But we will continue to kind of monitor it over this next five years. And, you know, at this point, it was not deemed reasonable based on ridership and cost estimates. But that certainly, as you've mentioned, can change rapidly as we continue to develop out there. So between us and Roseville, we will certainly keep an eye on that, yes.
Thank you.
Any other board members?
No questions. But I just wanted to say thank you for all the work that you've done. And I also wanted to say thanks to Mike. I think he's behind you. For all your community outreach efforts, and I saw him at multiple pop-ups and events throughout the year. So it was just really great that you guys did such extensive outreach and really appreciate it. Thank you.
Mike, would you like to say anything to us? Okay, I'm gonna open up the public. Anyone out there like to comment or have questions? Anyone online?
I see no one online, Chair.
Okay, we're gonna bring it back to the board for action.
I'll second.
Motion by Gore, second by Landon. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, have a great day.
Thank you for coming today. Okay, we're moving on to our supplemental 11C.
Good afternoon. Chair, members of the board. I'm Kevin Ordway. I'm an engineering manager with your Department of Public Works. Today, I'm bringing a few items regarding the Yankee Jims Bridge Replacement Project. I'll read the actions requested in the record and then give you a background and answer any questions. So the first action is we're asking that you adopt a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works upon receipt of construction authorization from Caltrans to award and execute a construction contract not to exceed $60 million with Flatiron West Incorporated upon review and approval by county council and risk management and authorizing the Director of Public Works or designee to execute necessary change orders in an amount not to exceed $210,000, consistent with Public Contract Code Section 20142 and Placer County procurement policy, and to take all other reasonable and necessary actions in furtherance of the contract. The second action is to approve the plans and specifications for the Yankee Jims Bridge Replacement Project as complete for construction. And the last action is to determine the proposed actions are consistent with the final environmental impact report for the Yankee Jims Bridge Replacement Project, State Clearing House Number 2020010388, certified by the Board of Supervisors on March 12, 2024. So the Yankee Jims Bridge Project is in a very remote and difficult area to construct. So back in, I think, 2016, we got some legislation passed to utilize a delivery method called Construction Manager/General Contractor. And we worked with FHWA and Caltrans to be one of the first local agencies in Northern California to use this method with the Federal Highway Bridge Program. And we've been working since 2018 with Flatiron to kind of work through the design, get through environmental clearance. And then through the process, we've been evaluating the cost every step of the way. And we're at the final stages where we're now negotiating the final cost. And if we can get into agreement on costs with our independent cost estimator and Flatiron, which we're really close, we'll negotiate the markup, the terms of the contract, we'll get Caltrans approval, and then we're able to go ahead and go to construction. The reason we're asking to have this authority delegateded to the Director is we have a couple sensitive environmental windows where if we reach this approval from Caltrans and FHWA to move forward, we'd like to be able to get this construction started in late this fall or this winter to get the trees removed and some other work ahead of environmental windows. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, bring it back to the board. Questions come, Supervisor Gustafson.
I don't have any questions, Kevin, but what a remarkable undertaking to secure all this funding, come up with a unique construction. I'm sure you were learning every step of the way on how to work on this delivery method. So I really wanna hats off to you and the department, all the staff on this one.
I think we're learning new things every day.
As we all do.
Yes.
Anyone else? Comments, questions? Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the public. Anyone in the public? Anyone online?
I see no one online, Chair.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Move approval.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Gustafson and a second by Gore. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, we are gonna move on to item 12, County Executive Jail-Based Competency Treatment Services Agreements. Good afternoon.
Okay, good afternoon, Chair Jones, members of your board, Daniel Chatney, Mrs. Schwab. I am Amanda Flo from the County Executive Office, and here with me today is Zarika Harris, who is also from the County Executive Office. She is a contracted minister in the South Placer Jail. Today, we are here to request your board approve the contracts associated with the Jail-Based Competency Treatment Program, also known as JBCT. Specifically, we are asking your board, one, approve a revenue agreement with the Department of State Hospitals to fund jail-based competency treatment services in Placer County Correctional Facilities in the maximum amount of $10,326,526.50 for the period of July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2027, subject to county council and risk management concurrence. Two, approve an agreement with California Health and Recovery Solutions to provide the mental health professionals and administrative support to administer the JBCT program in the not-to-exceed amount of $3,885,341.25 for the period of July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2027, subject to county council and risk management concurrence. Three, authorize the county executive officer or designee to sign the above referenced agreements, the amendments with a not-to-exceed amount of $100,000, and any required documents with county council and risk management concurrence. So the Department of State Hospitals, also known as DSH, is the primary entity responsible for providing competency treatment to defendants charged with a felony who have been deemed incompetent to stand trial under Penal Code Section 1370. Due to the increasing number of defendants found to be incompetent to stand trial, a significant lack of bed space capacity in the state hospitals, DSH began partnering with counties to provide JBCT programs for the provision of restoration of competency treatment services. This program increases DSH's capacity by providing restoration treatment services similar to those provided in state hospitals, however, in a county jail setting. In May of 2020, Placer County entered into agreement with DSH to implement a 15-bed felony JBCT program located at the South Placer Jail. DSH fully reimburses Placer County for both the county costs associated with operating the program as well as the cost for the mental health professionals and the administrative support, which we contract out. Those clinical services I just described were previously contracted through CFMG, California Forensic Medical Group, and will be transitioning to California Health and Recovery Solutions, also known as CRIS, with the approval of the new agreement today. Since the inception of the program, there have been 185 inmates admitted into the program with 114 restored to competency while in the JBCT program. The average number of days an inmate is in the program is 67.5, with the hopes or with the goal to restore them within 90 days of treatment. The new agreement with DSH includes monthly invoicing for the JBCT program based on the average census of inmates in the program. To allow for more stable funding, DSH has agreed to fund a minimum of 12 allocated beds per month, also funding up to the maximum of 12 beds per month. The 12 allocated bed minimum will be funded at a per diem rate. As of July 1, 2024, the per diem rate shall be $565.18 per bed and will increase every year thereafter. In addition, DSH has agreed to reimburse the county for interpreting services, medication, transportation, and travel services. The minimum amount of the revenue the county will receive pursuant to the agreement with DSH is $7,804,021.20. The maximum amount is $10,326,526.50. Staff negotiated a similar payment structure with CRIS to fund the restoration of competency treatment services to felony IST inmates participating in the JBCT program for a maximum amount of $3,885,341.25 for the contract period. This agreement has been reviewed and approved by DSH. Therefore, your board's approval today is requested to authorize a revenue agreement with DSH to fund the JBCT program and also to approve an agreement with CRIS for the mental health professionals and the administrative support to administer the program. And with that, I'll open the floor for any- the program. And with that, I'll open the floor for any questions you may have.
Okay, I'll bring it to the board. Questions or comments? No? Okay, I'll open it up to the public. Anyone out there? Anyone online?
I see no one online, Chair.
Okay, back to the board for action.
I'll second.
Motion by Holmes, second by Landon. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great day.
You too. Okay. Next is 12B, Short-Term Vacation Rental Inventory and New Lodging Units Policy Recommendation. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I know what you're thinking, an STR item right before lunch. But I promise this will be hopefully a short but mighty item for you. So, good afternoon, members of the board. Stephanie Holloway, your Deputy CEO in the Tahoe area. I am here to talk to you a little bit about an item regarding the short-term rental and our inventory of STR permits and a policy recommendation that we would like your feedback on. So just a little bit of background, I think I have a clicker here, a little bit of background for you all run through this just quickly. Your board did adopt an ordinance on short-term rentals within Eastern Placer back in the fall of 2019. That ordinance went into effect in January of 2020. The intent, and original intent of that ordinance was really to address some growing concerns that we were hearing in the community around short-term rental occupants in the neighborhoods, safety, noise, and to ensure building codes, building safety, as well as defensible space and fire code concerns. So with that, we did, your board did enact a moratorium, if you recall, where we did go back and amend the STR ordinance, really to bring forward a better balanced program between the STR permits and some housing availability in the region. So on February 8, that refined ordinance addressed a number of major issues that we were dealing with in the region, as well as, and I think this is the most important piece for today's discussion, a maximum cap on the number of STR permits, if you recall. That was set at 3,900 back in that time. So along with that ordinance, restated and amended ordinance, we also did get direction from your board to adaptively manage this program. And so that is what we're doing here today with this hopeful direction on some policy. Another important piece, since the original adoption of the ordinance in February of 2022, your board did consider and adopt amendments to the Tahoe Basin Area Plan. So this was an effort we were working on, is a land use effort, refining that land use ordinance, working with TRPA, really enhancing sustainability of our land use options within the region. In addition to that, we also did bring forward a new policy related to vacation rental in the region, and that policy is included in your packet. So, as you know, the Tahoe Basin Area Plan does emphasize town center redevelopment, creating more walkable neighborhoods, improving public infrastructure, and creating a more vibrant space within our town centers. So this coupled with our North Tahoe Economic Incentives Program, really looking to create new lodging opportunities within the town centers, but also create that vibrancy that we're looking for. So anyways, that policy that was added to the Tahoe Basin Area Plan was really an effort to bring that into alignment for our area plan. So with that, based on some feedback that we've gotten in the community, as well as some direction from your board, we are looking to try to expand that direction. The Tahoe Basin Area Plan, obviously, in its name applies to the Tahoe Basin. The STR program does apply outside the basin and to the entire area of our TOT boundary in Eastern Placer County. So that map is included in your packet. So the direction that we're seeking today is really a recommendation to expand that to the areas outside of the basin. And I'm gonna read this new language that we would like your feedback on for the record. So, "Looking to support adaptive management of short-term vacation rental inventory to align lodging and housing and community goals as new standard lodging units are added to the region. The short-term vacation rental maximum cap shall be decreased at an appropriate rate for each new lodging unit per subsequent STR ordinance amendments approved by the Placer County Board of Supervisors." So again, really a policy direction at this point. There's a lot of details that would need to be discussed and ironed out, and we would bring that forward through the appropriate mechanism of an ordinance amendment. So like I said, you know, looking for that direction, I'll just state, you know, I think the intent, looking forward, you know, we talk a lot about town centers. We do have resort areas within Eastern Placer Village areas that we are looking to kind of create that consensus for new lodging development. STRs obviously are not a standard lodging, but we are looking to kind of bring those lodging opportunities more centrally located. And then with this policy, looking to decrease the amount of permits outside of that area. So with that, I will, I think I have another slide, look for your feedback on this and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Gustafson.
Thank you. And Stephanie, thank you and your team for bringing this forward to expand that. As we look at where new lodging should be to reduce vehicle miles traveled and impacts in neighborhoods, they should be in the resort communities as well as the town centers. And so I think this policy just solidifies that so that we have direction to the committee. But my question to you, Stephanie, is the committee's also looking at reductions, limitations on room nights, geos spacing, a whole number of factors they're studying. And I'm maybe more familiar than the rest of the board on that, but you are looking to continue those discussions on a broader level. This would just give them direction to focus on those issues.
Yeah, correct. And I am anticipating more of a program update for your board when you're in Tahoe next month, so we'll go into that. But absolutely, the STR Advisory Group really has been tasked with, you know, a conversation around the cap. Did we set the cap right? Should we be revisiting that? And then I think in conjunction with that, you know, is there an appropriate location for STRs? Is there a better location than others for STRs? And that's where the geospatial conversation comes in. That is a very nuanced, detailed conversation. If we, you know, if the recommendation is to try to sort of realign location of STRs within the region. But again, the spirit and intent of this policy does align with the policy that your board has already adopted through the Tahoe Basin Area Plan, and then also the Tahoe Economic Incentives around lodging, really recognizing that desire to build standardized lodging and quality lodging, and how that locates within our town center goals and approach there.
Right. And functioning as a region, making sure the villages, both North Star and Olympic Valley, if there's anything proposed in Alpine Meadows, anywhere else, that those count if they can be also walkable community centers.
Correct.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Landon.
Thank you. I have a question. I just wanted to make sure I understood. So looking at the approved language from the former policy, it says, "The short-term rental maximum cap shall be decreased by ratio of one short-term rental for each new lodging unit." So the new one says it shall be decreased at an appropriate rate. And so is, obviously, that's more subjective. So is that, how will that rate be determined? Is that something that the task force would kind of say, okay, well, this is what we're thinking, and then it would come to the board for approval? Or how does that process work?
Yeah, absolutely. I think one of the things we recognize is we were really digging in on this recommendation for your board, is that not all short-term rental, not all vacation homes, if you will, function equally. So there are large homes, there are small homes, some that are occupied more frequently, some that don't rent very much at all. And to Supervisor Gustafson's point, I think the goal is really for us to kind of look at that more holistically. I think the one-for-one seemed reasonable at the time, but we want to look at that more holistically of how do we provide a benefit with the offset that essentially that this policy would be creating. So lots of conversation I see to come, lots of analytics around a recommendation for your board of, is that one-to-one? Is it based on a bedroom? Is it based on a square footage? So we'll do that work moving forward and bring that forward through the ordinance.
Great, thanks.
Supervisor Gore.
Thank you. I haven't really thought through what I'm gonna say, so I'm trying to ask the question. So we have a policy that says swap one-to-one.
Correct.
And we haven't built any new lodging. We're in the process of building new lodging, and we're talking about rental lodging, right, vacation stays. So we haven't even, we haven't built any, we haven't reduced any. And now the question then is, how much more might we reduce in the future? And, you know, I think this originally, we did a lot of this, one, because of noise, but two, the biggest concern that we were losing out on housing units for people to live in. And data has shown that really hasn't worn out, right? It's really just the cost of living up there and the rent or the purchase prices have increased because people from the outside are coming in. So it really hasn't changed the housing market for locals to live. I guess I'm really concerned about just, people have private property rights, and we have to really balance that. Like, people have a right to purchase a home and then utilize it. I do agree it's better to utilize, to move the lodging into the town centers, and I think that that makes most sense. But I just, I want to caution us, be really careful about not allowing people to have private property rights. Like, we have that balance. And so I understand folks would like to have, probably, it sounds like they'd like to have a lower cap. And I'm not opposed, I just know that this is gonna be some hard conversations.
Sure. Yeah, no, I acknowledge that. I, you know, I think the thing I would remind the board is that we're currently sitting below the cap today. So we have about 3,400 permits that we've issued. There's some pluses and minuses. That's an adaptive program that we go through on a daily basis. So I think the, as we wandered into this conversation of, did we set the cap right? Did that, you know, is there a desire to possibly change that? I think there's an opportunity here, again, is, you know, we're not taking away essentially a permit, but maybe even just reducing the availability of the free board, if you will, that's in the system right now. So I think that we're at a good spot, I think, in the program to be having those conversations. It definitely is a hard conversation, and we acknowledge that.
Okay. I think it's a good idea. I mean, if you, if we build more lodging units, then we should have less requirement on the short-term rentals. But as you say, we're well below our cap, as it is right now. And so I guess you'll take into consideration also vacancies and such like that, because I have no idea how that's going. I'm gonna take another winter season to go through here first, see how it goes with all the skiers and everybody.
Chair Jones, can I make another comment?
Yes, you sure can.
I've spoken with my counterparts in many areas of the state that have put a lower cap and started the enforcement. And I've shared this with Stephanie and the team and the Short-Term Rental Committee. A lot of, a lot of issues come up once you are down at that cap number, and how people play games and what they do. And so we've been fortunate that we've had a lot of voluntary compliance and are able to bring people in. But we're gonna have to have a lot of thought about how, what it means when you do start reducing those numbers and there's a waiting list and those sorts of things. But there's many ways around it. There, we can learn from others how to do it right. Some that jumped in right away to do it differently than we did are experiencing a lot of neighbor contention in trying to compete for those units. And so that is a very interesting dynamic that they're experiencing and warn us not to do. So there's a lot behind everything we touch on this one, a lot to unravel. So thank you for
You're welcome.
your efforts, because it is never-ending.
Yeah, and I'll just add, I mean, at the last STR Advisory Group meeting, we did have a conversation about the cap, really getting feedback from all of the members that sit on that group, and it is a very diverse group intentionally. You know, we heard things from, you know, why do we have a cap, to the cap is set just fine, it makes sense, it made sense at the time, to should it be, you know, it, should it be lowered? So it's still a very dynamic conversation in that group. And so we feel, but we do feel like this recommendation does really align with a direction you've already given through the TBAP, and then knowing that we have, you know, some sort of desires to have more of those towns, those lodging units and lodging opportunities within those town centers, but also resort centers as well.
Mm-hmm. Well, to me, it makes sense. And also understanding that the whole purpose, I thought, to try to either reduce or limit the number of STRs was to increase your housing inventory for people who want to buy and live and work up there. So I mean, it's, I know it's a delicate balance and it's tough. I think your working group was a great idea. Sounds like it's going well.
Yeah, it's a great group. Yep, we enjoy it.
So good. I'm gonna open it up for public comment.
Supervisors, Wayne Nader. I've been following this, as you know, and speaking to you about it over time. Been attending also the advisory group meetings and listening to the public's input on this. And to address Supervisor Gore's comment, my understanding, there hasn't been a new hotel or motel built in the basin in 60 years. So what is the likelihood of getting that to happen? I've been an advocate of capping it for some time at the 3,400. I can't imagine another 500 units in the Tahoe Basin or the Tahoe area. It's already causing a great deal of chaos in the community. Has the county made good decisions to move, to tighten up the requirements? Yes, they have. There are now about 10 county employees that are focused on the STRs. Many of those are enforcement officers, so that's certainly helping the issue up there. But I believe that we keep hearing from the public that there's still some major issues to deal with. Now, on the cap, as Stephanie said, there's about 3,400 active right now. 39 is the top. Again, do we want 500 more up there? Just to put it in context, that's more than LA County has by a lot. And you're considering how, what a concentrated area these are in. You know that there's gonna be implications. And if you've ever seen a map, which maybe many of you have, where these are located, they are really intense in a lot of communities. So these residents that still live there have to deal with that. I have also been an advocate of putting in a one-year moratorium. When you buy a property, you cannot lease it out until a year later. I think Truckee has that in place already. This stops the investors, because the investors are the ones who've really been raising the price. We talk about affordability up there, both rent and also the value of the properties. These investors come in and will bid the price up because they know they can make a substantial amount of money through these STR programs. So again, I've been an advocate of that. I wish we could sort of scatter all of those out more so they aren't concentrated. But, you know, as I keep telling you, the horse is out of the barn. Now, what do we do? I mean, can we get the horse back somehow? I'm not sure how we can, because I understand it's an enforcement issue. But I think, you're hearing, this is not just a Placer County issue, not just a Tahoe issue. This is internationally. I don't know if you heard recently, Barcelona voted to eliminate STRs by 2026 completely in their town. So everybody's wrestling with this, how to deal with it. And I just think we need to continue to push forward to tighten this up as much as we possibly can. So that's my comment.
Thank you for your comments.
Sure.
Stephanie, you have anything yet to add?
No, I don't think I have anything to add.
Okay, anyone else I should ask online?
I see no one online, Chair.
Okay, all right. We'll bring it back to the board for action.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Well, it's not an action. Karen's gonna tell me that we're giving corrections.
Oh, okay, yes. Well, we've received the presentation, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not reading my notes here.
Feel free to provide your direction.
Thank you very much for your presentation, as always.
Absolutely. I think expanding that area to include the whole region as we consider where new lodging goes, with the hope that we do get new lodging, and this is just one more tool to push that way and address the short- and this is just one more tool to push that way and address the short term. And I look forward to the rest of the committee's recommendations as we move forward. Thank you.
The next step is incentivizing people to build that lodging.
Yes.
I know. Let's give them a free something for a year, I don't know. Thank you for that. Okay, we're going to move on to item 13, Clerk of the Board, California State Association of Counties.
Good afternoon, Board. Weird to be on this side of this. I'm not used to standing over here. Anyway, Megan Wood, Clerk of the Board. This should be a pretty straightforward item. We do it every year. We are making our appointment to CSAC, and the recommendation is to keep our current member, which is Supervisor Gore. We make this appointment early outside of our normal January discussion because the board member would need to be able to attend the annual conference, which is on November 18th. At this place, this is where they will decide the nomination of officers and executive committee members. Supervisor Gore does serve as an executive committee member. If we don't have our appointment in place by the 18th, we lose out on that ability to do that and then would lose out on having a member on the executive committee. The member may be changed at any point in time throughout the year. That is dependent upon the approval of CSAC, but, so, pretty straightforward. We brought it forward as a department item solely to keep transparency with, throughout this process of appointing board members. As you know, when we bring the full committee list forward in January, we do it as a department item once and then consent. So, we're just trying to keep that in the same vein as we do for those. If there's any questions, I'm available. Supervisor Gore, if there's anything you want to add that I missed.
Supervisor Gustafson.
No, I'm sorry. I think I've just been really negligent on my line today.
Oh, no, that's okay. That's okay. I don't want to neglect anybody.
One thing I did notice is that we don't have an alternate for my board position for CSAC. So, we can, we might want to consider adding an alternate when we go through the process in January, because I realized everyone else has an alternate, and if I can't be there, then we don't have someone representing Placer County.
So, staff has, we did actually notice that in this, and so, we do have it on the list for the January consideration is to ensure that an alternate is included going forward.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So, I guess we just need to bring it here for action.
Move approval. Oh, public comment?
Oh, well, there's no public out there, no. Public comment, please, online.
I see no one online, Chair.
See, I have intuition.
I will move approval.
And I'll second.
Motion by Landon, second by Gustafson. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you, Megan, and congratulations.
Extra work.
Yeah, congratulations and good luck on more work. Okay, so now, I'm going to turn it over to County Council to excuse us.
The board will now adjourn to closed session to consider one item of real property and one item of anticipated litigation.
Okay, we'll be back. Good afternoon, and welcome back to our board meeting. I'm going to turn it over to County Council.
The board adjourned to closed session to consider two items. On the item of real property negotiations, the board heard a report and provided direction on a 5-0 vote. Under anticipated litigation, the board considered one potential exposure to litigation. The board heard a report. No action was requested or taken. This concludes the report out of closed session.
Anything else to come before the board today? Seeing none, we stand adjourned. Till next time.